Well, unfortunately, we have another hole in our board tonight. We're four again. Bob is not with us. He is working on yet another real estate deal. I guess as the real estate market has improved, it has also meant that our board member, Bob Brados, has not been able to participate as much as he would like, or we would like him to. So, we will begin tonight with our superintendent-- oh, we have to do our acceptance of our agenda. I'm sorry about that. Can I have a motion to accept our agenda, please?
So long.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we'll begin tonight with our superintendent's report. It feels a little weird to be here on a Thursday night. My energy's a little bit lower at the end of the week than it is at the beginning of the week, so hopefully you're going to pep us up right now.
Oh, I'm going to, yes. So, I'll start with certainly not the greatest news we've endured in our community, but while certainly was an atypical evening with the tragic incident that occurred at the train station, I just wanted to say that, you know, in our schools, as always, our faculty and staff rallied to be able to make sure our kids were focused and had a very productive day, and as always, to give our accolades to our partners in the community, those community members that rose to the occasion in that terrible incident. And of course, as always, our public employees, whether it's the fire department, police department, for the good work that they do on a regular basis. But there's many other things in the news that are quite important. New York State budget, and it's had some tremendous impacts across the state, and in particular, in education. As much as I would like to say how pleased we are to be receiving $110,000 in additional state aid, then of course, we're happy to have additional funds, which are always hard to come by, but with going to come a lot of challenges for us. The governor has pushed forth a reform agenda, or the next tier of his reform agenda, and in doing so, has really put some additional stressors, I believe, on school communities. First and foremost, with their intent to try to increase accountability for educators, they've introduced a new APPR plan. There are some high-line details that we can speak to, but realistically, we have to wait until June 30th, when we anticipate that the commissioner's regulations will come out. Those regulations will spell out the particular details that school districts must comply with across the state, and that from that period of time, we have until November 15th to successfully negotiate and have an approved APPR plan. And if we're not able to achieve that objective, currently, according to the state law, that additional $110,000 will be in jeopardy. We have a great relationship with our faculty and administrators association, so we are approaching this optimistically, that we will be able to achieve that deadline. But it's the details that are going to come out of those requirements that are going to be concerning. There's much less that our local district will be able to negotiate, and that much of the plan is going to be dictated by specifics that are going to come from SED within those regulations that we will see on June 30th. But there's going to be a different methodology that's going to be spelled out in how teachers are going to be evaluated. There was a lot of controversy about the use of independent outside evaluators, and while that language got toned down, there certainly are some impacts that are of concern for us, where we're not looking at having to employ outside people, and when I say outside, I'm referencing folks that work outside our district to come in and evaluate our teachers, which I believe would have been certainly not a positive experience. We're now in a position where, as the law states, that an independent outside evaluator can be a qualified certified person, so we look around the room at our administrative team, but they would be evaluating people in different school buildings. So, we could use, for example, a high school principal and a middle school principal could observe one another's staff, or elementary could swip-flip. The state is requiring that there's going to be a minimum of two required observations, and one of those two observations will have to utilize an outside independent evaluator. So, we'll have to see what more of those details work-- look like. But we need to be clear that the most effective way to have quality teacher evaluation and observation is through administrators that know the individuals, that work with the individuals on a daily basis, that are intimately involved in that teacher's curriculum, and understands and knows the dynamics in those particular classrooms. And so, clearly, you're going to look at a building administrator, principal, assistant principal, working with their own teachers. I'm confident that our other administrators will do an excellent job, but they're going to be one step removed from the process. Also, kind of stepping back and just looking at the simple logistics associated with it, there's going to be challenges. We're looking at people that are going to be have to moving from building to building. There's going to be lost time, less efficiency, and some lost productivity associated with that. I have all the confidence in the world in our administrative team, and they'll do an outstanding job, but it'll be yet another challenge that's imposed on our school district. There's other aspects of this law that are going to have impacts for school districts across our state in looking at how folks can be dismissed or need to be dismissed. In the past, if we had teachers, or principals for that matter, that had two consecutive ineffective ratings, a school board could bring about charges to have them dismissed. While that option still is before us, if an individual has three ineffective ratings in a row, the school district must bring charges according to the new law. I don't think we'd ever find ourselves in that position, but it's another change. And certainly, you know, tenure ratings have some-- tenure has something to do with APPR as well. So, there's a lot to come, a lot that'll have to be accomplished this fall, considering the regulations will come out June 30th, just as everybody's heading out on summer vacation. So, we're going to have to develop our strategy and plan and move forward and be very effective in our work in the fall. Also, associated with the state budget, there is opportunities for-- to expedite the termination process for people that have committed horrible offenses, such as assaults on students. There's also easier plans in place now to be able to terminate probationers for deficient performance without regard to APPR. The probationary period has been revised, so if we're looking at in the past, we always kind of thought about that three-year period. For new folks, people that are applied, that are hired come this summer, it'll become four years. When we think about folks that had already been tenured in a similar position in another district, then they, when they become employed in another district, that tenure period rather than three years was always two. That now is increased another year as well, so they would have three when they transfer into another district in a tenure position. There's also some standards that are being introduced to try to improve graduate schools of education and accountability for them, and looking at some revisions to the continuing education requirements for currently certificated faculty members. And then finally, a big focus on this was the treatment of failing schools and the opportunities for state intervention to begin to take over failing districts across the state. So now, you know, we've read a lot of headlines, we've read a lot of different groups' interpretations of the education laws associated with the budget. So, now we kind of wait for the next stop, next step. We wait for regulations to come out to be able to tell us what this means and have to-- how we have to begin to implement that. So, we're going to learn more in the coming months, and we're certainly going to bring that information forward and share it with the board and the public, and begin to communicate this information throughout the community, so folks are aware of the impacts this legislation's having on our As many people know, we're beginning New York State assessments next week in grades three through eight with ELA. On Tuesday and the following Tuesday, we begin mathematics. There's certainly been a lot of discussion and controversy around the use of New York State assessments and its correlation with teacher ratings. That linkage certainly has made a lot of folks uncomfortable. Also, there's a growing debate around local control and the state's use of assessments as it relates to APPR and the like, to try to pull back some control from school districts. That's been certainly concerning to many, of course, us locally. There's also been discussion about, and you've certainly seen a lot more dialogue in other communities than ours, about an opt-out movement where parents are electing to not have their children participate in the state assessments. Across the state, all districts are required to administer the state assessments, and-- but in doing so, we have no authority to encourage or promote folks opting out. We acknowledge that there's concern and question and some discussion in our community, and maybe not to the same extent that may exist in other communities, but it is present. Therefore, today, we sent out a-- or I sent out a letter with an FAQ to the school community, trying to clarify some of those issues, and we certainly encourage any parents in the audience or watching at home, that if they do have questions, that they should reach out to the school principal and talk about the testing and the options that may be available for them. But at the same time, I want to acknowledge that we are required by law to have a 95% participation rate in state assessments, and failure to meet that objective could have negative consequences on the district. The first thing that is most obvious, that if a district does not have the 95% participation rate, we would not be meeting the standard under No Child Left Behind, under Adequate Yearly Progress, or AYP. And a district that does not meet AYP for three consecutive years is then subject to state intervention. We'd have to develop local assistance plans, which would be action plans to address areas of concern in the schools. There would be gobs and gobs of paperwork that would have to be filed with the state, and certainly a negative label on the district. Additionally, because there's linkage to Title I funding, Title I funds in a school district could be redirected to other services than what we typically use them for, which would be paying for faculty salary and things of that nature. We receive approximately $70,000 Title I money in the district, and we'd hate to see that impacted. But it's an important topic, so if anyone has questions, please reach out to your school principals, look at the resources that we sent out today to all elementary through middle school parents, and have posted on our website as well. Standalone field tests, I just want to touch on it really quickly. We talked about it a little bit at the last board meeting, and we have it scheduled for a proper discussion at our next board meeting, which is next Tuesday. We've discussed that specifically, the state has mandated standalone field tests, and in doing so, school districts, including ours here in Irvington, have asked SED as to why we need to administer them. They have stated repeatedly in writing and verbally, and most recently to me on the phone yesterday, that it is a part of the state's required assessment program. In doing so, like other school districts, I have asked for examples of where these requirements originate, whether it's in regulation or state statute. They have not been forthcoming with that information as of yet, and I was told, and I have this in quotes in my notes, that she will try to get us some information. I do not anticipate that there's going to be much information coming forth. I told her that we were meeting tonight and that we had a meeting on Tuesday, and I would love to be able to share news from SED publicly at the meeting, and she understood that. But instead, she called and left a message today for me indicating that if we happen to receive state field tests, which would be scheduled for the first week of June, if they start to come in the mail, that we should just keep them secure and prepare to send them back if we're not going to administer them. So, I'm still waiting for some communication and look forward to the dialogue that we'll have here next week. But thus far, we have been notified that we will-- we're being required, with quotes, to administer standalone field tests in earth science regents, which impacts middle school, high school, sixth grade mathematics, and according to the state website, that we should be doing the same in third grade math. And unless Mr. Lichtenwalner has received some mail today that he hasn't shared with me, shaking his head, no. We have not received any official notification, so-- but we're planning as if that's the case. So, we'll have conversation here. The administrative team has been talking. We and I have a recommendation for the board next week that we would look forward to discussing. Finally, two other things. We talked a little bit about the creation of the Innovation Fund, which is a partnership between the school district, the Education Foundation, and Sunnyside Bank, and a very generous private donor, where we've opened up grant opportunities to high school students. Just before break, the IEF announced their first round of awards that will go to students. There are nine groups of students that are being recognized, and their successful grants will take place this spring. And I have to say, we already have some students that are underway. We have play auditions going on for a school play that started. We have some female students at the high school that want to go teach STEM lessons at an elementary level. We have students that want to create a weather app. We have also students that want to create a tiny house for instructional purposes. Many exciting projects, and so we're pleased with seeing our students' enthusiasm and look forward to their creativity and seeing their product when they're completed. And the final thing that I want to touch base on, it's just Pearl Mazeros Field. It is just in rough shape. Now, look over to Mr. Knowles and Mr. McCormick, and the amount of time that's been spent on the field so far this year. When you walk on the field, and as recent as yesterday afternoon, you walk on the field and it's still like a sponge. You have water that comes up around your feet, so it's not in a position for us to be able to open the field fully for practice yet, let alone competition. If you may recall, in the fall, we discussed some extra excavation that we had to do to expand our drainage system to meet village requirements as well as DEC requirements, and in doing so, we had to dig some pits on the field. Those areas are particularly mucky. I have to say, Gary and his crew have done a nice job with it over the last week, and we're hopeful that once we get through tomorrow, we have five dry days in front of us, and there's seeding work and rolling the fields. We'll hopefully be in a position where we'll be able to start practicing on them first, and then in the hopefully not-too-far future, be able to begin to open the fields for competition. Mr. McCormick, as always, has been working creatively. We actually had a meeting with the village to explore possibilities for different utilization of village fields. We've been working with Mercy College, some other school districts where we're traveling to to practice on their artificial turf fields. It's been difficult. We're trying to find a way to get by, but hopefully Mazeros will be open in the near future, so we can begin to use that resource for our programs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was actually just going to-- yeah. So, I wanted you to actually just speak to what we heard from, in the news really, from Ms. Tish, the-- the--
Chancellor.
--regent chancellor, about the possibility of sort of bifurcating the state's approach to school districts, that school districts that are high-performing would be somehow exempt. It's almost like she threw that out there after the fact.
Whether it was damage control or a genuine effort, certainly, that's been a conversation that's been occurring in New York for years and years. The chancellor proposed that high-performing districts could possibly be exempted from some of these new laws, in particular, speaking to the new APPR requirements. So, to me, there's concerns there. So, when I-- as the superintendent of the Irvington School District, I can sit back and say, you know what? That could be a great relief for us. You know, we wouldn't have to worry about negotiating a new plan. We don't have to worry about the outside evaluator components and some of those other issues that would pose a challenge for us. But then you step back and you start to think about, you worry. Well, how do you define high-performing? You know, could there be 30 different, you know, goals that you have to meet in that category? Are there elements of diversity that we have to achieve to make that standard? So, it's a very general term. Then, stepping back a little bit as an educator, you know, you worry about, you know, additional labeling and stratification of our schools too, being a little problematic, and wondering what impacts that has on the overall system of schooling. And if it starts to give successful schools more independence, I think that's a very good thing. But I just worry about what the next steps become for state, the state, and what type of regulation they try to place on us. Do they, you know, remove one piece and then put another burden on our back some other way? So, there's a lot that's-- that we'll have to wait and see. We're not going to know what that looks like until June 30th, I suppose. But there is an opportunity there. So, if anyone in the community has opinion, we encourage you to reach out to the chancellor, SED, because that's where the influence needs to go now. Our legislators, now they're kind of backed off. They did what they could or couldn't through the budget process. But now, there's opportunity to reach out to the chancellor and SED to voice your opinion on those issues.
Well, that was going to be my follow-up. Is-- so, is that the sort of, for parents that do want to make their voices heard, is it backed through their legislators, or is it through the chancellor herself?
Yeah, I don't think there's value--
Or is it both?
Yeah, I would say I don't think there's value in going to the governor's office. But I think there's always value in letting our local legislators know what we think. I think there's value in reaching out to Judith Johnson, our new regent member. I think there's value in generally contacting SED, and of course, Meryl Tish, and you can email her directly.
And do we still have that contact information?
Contact information's all on the Facebook page.
Facebook, but not necessarily--
Not on the website at this point in time.
But we could put it there.
We could put it there.
Good. Robin, did you have a question?
Yeah, different topic.
Sure.
Kind of what he ended up on, talking about the field.
Yes.
I just had a question for Arnie about the season. Did any of the seasons shift back because the weather's been so cold, or did all the teams kind of start on time?
High school or middle school?
Okay.
High school or middle school?
Both.
Okay, so, high school hasn't shifted in the sense that they've extended the season. We are still sticking to our sectional deadline dates.
Okay.
There was conversation today with the possibility that we shifted a little bit, a couple of days. There is about, I was at a meeting today, there's 20 schools that haven't today had played varsity baseball, different fields. Lacrosse, a little different. They play in regular, not turf fields, it's not in turf, baseball fields. So, the middle school schedule has shifted already because we started after the break. So, those are the only ones that are really shifting. The section is sticking to their end point where seeding for the sectional tournaments.
Okay.
The JVs have a little bit more latitude. They can go beyond that date because--
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And I just would like to add to Chris's comments about the position that the district is in, in terms of these changes to the state education policy, that obviously the board is concerned about this. Since I've been on the board for four years now, we've seen Common Core, APPR, and now these changes take place, and it's obviously hugely distracting in many ways to our administrators and our teachers on fundamental level. But as a board, I just want to remind people that we've taken an oath to uphold the laws of the state. And so, while we can personally be concerned and opposed to what these regulations mean for us as a board, we have to do our job, which is to uphold these laws. And I know that there are plenty of people out there who want us to kind of raise a flag and say, "Go out and protest and take down the governor," but you're not going to hear that from the board. You might hear it from individuals, but you're probably not going to hear it from the board, because that is an oath that we took. And so, I just want to be clear that that doesn't mean we're not concerned. That doesn't mean we're not going to talk about it in a professional way. It just means that we're probably not going to sound as reactionary and upset as maybe some parents would like us to be. So, having said that, segue back to our superintendent on the budget.
Very good.
I think this is kind of our fifth or sixth presentation that we've had, but we're coming to an end. We have two more after this, I believe. And then, we are ready to sign, seal, and deliver our budget to the voters.
So, when we started this process back what seems to be many moons ago, we did so by establishing objectives. And I don't want to be redundant, but I always think it's important that if this is the first time someone's attending a meeting, or someone is viewing from home, or the first time they pick up one of the handouts, they get a sense of where we were and how we got to where we are today. And in doing so, at the first meeting, I kind of displayed this slide to talk about our objectives and to think about where we were going. In doing so, we wanted to provide opportunities to enhance programs, enhance our facilities, to invest in our students and our staff. But we also want to balance that with sustaining the programs and services that we value or required to have along the way. So, I think it's just important to draw that to your attention once again. In this process, we've had a series of meetings, one that started back--
Did it go?
I just moved it.
Oh.
So, it started back in January. Our principals came in and had a great workshop with the board and talked about the work in their schools and the needs moving forward. And then we started moving that forward, administration started to present and discuss what those considerations and needs would be for the following year. We then transferred, transitioned over, talking about the operational sides of things. And then, to where we are today, following the proposed budget, we're talking about adjustments based upon board direction that was given recently. So, the proposed budget, while we know there's going to be adjustments, it was really centered on those objectives and belief that it promotes excellence, more opportunity for our kids, more support for students. It continues to expand our focus on technology, and it builds upon our success that we've become accustomed to and promoting here in Irvington. But at the same time, we're looking at continuing to invest in our facilities, to support these beautiful schools, to make sure that they're well-maintained for our students to enjoy. And I believe the budget continues to demonstrate fiscal responsibility. In doing so, in getting to that pathway, and thinking about how we got to the budget on the 24th, we made a number of reductions and adjustments that you can see before you. Some weren't painful, as you can see, some were easy to make, and glad to see that we had some tuition obligations that were no longer before us, that we are anticipating a bond refinance and some savings that would come in from that that were greater than originally budgeted. And because of the delay in our construction projects, we're looking at a situation where we're able to postpone some purchases associated with Mazeros Field and Ole Track. And in doing so, we came forward with a presentation, a budget where we cut about $190,000 from those original considerations, and presented a budget where there is a budget-to-budget increase of 2.95%, which related to a 4.36% tax rate increase. And this budget, as you can see, at that time, was $23,000 under the tax cap. So, what this looked like to the average household, you can see on bottom line. So, we're looking at a home valued in the mid $700,000s, that there would have been an estimated change in taxes of about $720. What that meant, if we took a look at really what we had presented, if we look at the current existing tax rate, that budget that was increasing 2.95%, actually, only owned of that 4.36% of the tax rate increase, 2.92%. But unfortunately, we've had a lot of adjustments and assessments in our community, many large tax certs that were settled. And because of that shift in the assessed values in the community, we're seeing that large impact of nearly one and a half additional percentage points associated with tax rate. In this budget, and just quickly, just a glance of what we presented and where that stood in the history of looking at our budgets, the 2.95% budget-to-budget increase was nice to see. It was one of the lower budgets in the last few years, but unfortunately, as we said, the tax rate was higher than we had been accustomed to. So, following the last Board of Education meeting after the proposed budget, board asked a lot of good questions. There was a lot of discussion about programs and what where values were for the board and interest in the board. But there was also a story that came out of it and worrying about our tax rates and that fiscal responsibility. And the board, at that point, gave us the charge, walking away from the meeting, that we should come back and take a look at the budget in a little bit of a different way, and in doing so, come back and prioritize where we are, and come back with some adjustments. So, rather than that 4.36% tax rate increase, come back with a figure that's under 4%. Come back with another one that's under 3.75%, and then come back with another one at 3.5%. So, we made some adjustments. Fortunately, that state aid worked into this equation that certainly helped my work a little bit. And-- And, but we have to be mindful, that's still dependent on successful negotiation of an APPR plan. So tonight, we're gonna map out what those priorities look like. And in doing so, we'll follow up with some conversation with the board. So in looking at these in, in a sense of priority and tiers, you can see how they've been broken out in looking at the different priorities. So the first objective that, if you recall, was to come below 4%. And in doing so, we saw that as a figure of about $200,000 we had to reduce from the proposed budget from the last meeting. And in doing so, we arrived at a, a series of reductions and an increase in revenue that equated to 3.95 percent. To arrive at this figure, you can see the anticipated state aid, and I have the word anticipated there for a reason because of that asterisk associated with the APPR. We've adjusted our technology lease. Big part of our technology lease was looking to install a wireless network at Dowslane and Main Street School. The district, like all districts across the state, we're in a position where we're going to be receiving funds through the Smart Schools grant. The state is just rolling out the details for that. But a Wi-Fi network meets the specifications for that grant money. So we'll recommend to the committee that puts together that plan that the Wi-Fi network be included in that grant funding. And in doing so, we're able to reduce nearly $35,000. We had our bond sale recently for the refinance. And I just wanna, a little PR for the board and for Ms. Miller, that this refinance of approximately $25 million, over the life of this bond, no additional years, is going to save the taxpayers in Irvington approximately $6 million. And in doing so, because the sale went well, we even saw a greater savings than we originally were advised to budget for. So nearly another $15,000 savings we're realizing this year. Then when we look to the next item, ENL or ESL. ENL is the new term, English as a new language. There are new regulations or revised regulations that have come out of SED. And we've talked about this in the past, being another unfunded or underfunded mandate. And in doing so, to meet the standards, when you read the law, when you read the regulations just in black and white, you see those standards. We went through, analyzed our services, our student needs and the numbers. And to be able to fulfill those obligations, we are in a position where we had to hire one full-time staff member. So mind you, I'm saying that, and we look at a full-time staff member being about $96,000 in our budget with no additional state aid. So you think of those impacts that we referenced before that come from Albany. This is another example of that. However, since our last meeting in PPS, Ms. Krieger and Mr. Palermo have been doing some work. And some new guidance has come out that has changed how we can provide services. And we worked diligently to make sure we got that information in writing from an SED representative. And in essence, when we look at some of the pull-out services that we've been able to provide in the past, because we have folks that are our current ENL teachers that have dual certification, that counts for that integration piece that is required within the regulation. So they spent time over break and the days leading up to it, taking a look at our services with our ENL teachers, evaluating our student needs. And we're able to cover our requirements at this point in time and do so with the only, the addition of a half-time employee. So we currently have 1.5 employees that teach ESL. We would be adding one additional. So we see a save, half of an additional to make it 2.0. So we will be seeing a savings here of approximately $48,000.
I presume you'd like us to ask questions at the end, right?
That, that would work.
That would work.
So as we head to the next tier with a target that was a 3.75 percent tax rate increase, we had a target of approximately $300,000. And in doing so, we had some more difficult decisions to make. And it wasn't as easy as that first round. There was conversation in the room at the last meeting questioning the necessity of the repaving of the middle school parking lot. We've reevaluated and we still see it as a need. But rather than going out and repaving the entire parking lot, it's been reevaluated. We're gonna do about $5,000 worth of repair work and forego nearly $55,000, or $45,000 worth of costs. We also took some time to analyze our substitute budget. And when we look at that, we're looking at sub-teachers as well as custodians. And we have projections that Beverly typically maintains that looks at the usage that we've had over the years. We think we're making some good progress this year. We've made some adjustments to our school calendar next year. And in doing so, we're confident that we can comfortably reduce those budget lines by $25,000. We had a, a lot of conversation in this room about expanding our world language program and looking at a new experience for our fifth grade students. But we talked about taking a different approach. And it was a great idea that grew out of work in Main Street School and with Dr. Core. But when we step back and, we really wanna make sure, we're gonna ask the board and the community to make the investment in this program, that we're gonna have a well-developed program, a program that's gonna be thought out and that we'll be able to articulate the next time we wanna come back and have the conversation. So we thought we would step back for a year on this and come back with our thinking as we move forward and to be able to more clearly articulate what our objectives would be with the program. And in doing so, we're able to forego that expenditure of $40,000. So you're looking at this tier amounts to 109,500. And in doing so, you can see, it just brings us just north of where we needed to be, at $317,000 to achieve that 3.75 percent objective. So with the next target being 3.5 percent, we had even more challenging decisions to make. And I almost wish I flipped these in, in order because one is a little easier to explain than the other. When we look at the instructional salaries, it's typical accounting procedures that you budget for full staffing for the school year. And in doing so, there's times that you have some savings that comes up because you have a teacher that goes out on a leave of absence, whether that's for maternity or other illness. And you typically have some breakage where you hire a new person that comes in that is making less money to fill that spot. And in doing so, you have some savings. But there's not always a guarantee as to how much that would be. So we spent some time going back to see what we'd be comfortable with. And we came up with a figure of $22,000. The next reduction here was certainly more challenging. We stood here in this room last year. We talked about the need to expand our special education programs at the middle school or special education services at the middle school to provide more in-class support for all of our students. But when we step back, we also think that there's other priorities here that we think might be greater. We look at some of the needs that we've discussed at the elementary level. We look at some of the needs that we've discussed at the high school. And simply stated, we're seeing that as a greater priority at this point in time. Mr. Sotile and I have also had a conversation over the past week about maybe taking some time to step back to look at our overall support systems that we have in the middle school and take a holistic look at what we're doing. So we're not just gonna have conversation about the in-class support, but let's talk about the BSP, the Building Support Program. Let's talk about other opportunities that we can have to support all of our children. So we're stepping away from this request right now. But it's something that we're gonna need to come back to. And it's gonna be an objective of work heading into next year at the middle school because we wanna make sure that we're coming forward with a proposal that's gonna support all of our children. And maybe this proposal isn't there for $96,000 next year. Or maybe we're coming forward with a proposal that's grander, that looks different, that includes different types of services, that's serving different types of kids' needs. But we can't tell you what that looks like today because we're not there. But we are gonna go down that path. So with that unfortunate decision that we did make, we find ourselves within tier three, saving another $116,000 for a grand total savings of $433,000. So here is a illustration. If you think in the beginning, we started looking at that average home and what the tax increases would look like for those homes. And here, we did the same kinda thing. We start on the left and looking at where we're moving across with tier one, tier two, and tier three, and seeing what the impacts are associated with each of those individual tax levels. So just a simple illustration for the board and public to see what that impact would be on the different houses that we've modeled for the community. So another illustration to, to look exactly where we are and to see where the tax rates would be, starting with the proposed budget that has been presented. And then again, looking at each of the tiers and a further illustration of what the estimated tax rates would be associated with these individual budgets. And then what the respective tax rate increases are. So you can see from 4.36 percent all the way down to 3.48 percent. Bev is just gonna speak quickly to the tax cap calculation. And has, there's been some shifts there and they're multifaceted because of state aid, because of the bond refinancing and so on.
Right. There has been some changes to the tax cap. And the majority of the adjustment is due to the final figures that came in from the bond refunding. So I had to change the exemptions because the exemptions is really your debt service minus the state aid you get for building aid. So that was reduced by approximately $40,000 due to our savings. And the, that was the majority of it. The building aid actually changed about $5,000. So with that, if we had kept our current budget that was presented in March 24th, we would have been slightly over the tax cap by about $15,000, $16,000. But it really has no impact now on, on the budgets because we're presenting tiers one, two, and three.
Great, thank you, Bev. At the last meeting, there was also some discussion that grew from around the board table about a possible, another idea that could be floated for integration into the budget. And it was an ELA coach, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Core to speak to what this may look like.
In considering this, and I, and I think Dr. Harrison wrote here that we would expand on a job description, should this be something that you'd like to push forward on, considering, as you, many of you know, we've had the experience of having a K-5 teaching learning facilitator who was an ELA coach. Actually, it was Joyce Chapnick originally. We also had a secondary teaching learning facilitator, Jen DeLeese. Upon reduction of one of those, we went back to having a, at that point, it became more of a three-eight approach to supporting literacy. So we've gone through several iterations of this. And I think if we were to move forward, we would really wanna consider where the greatest need is. One of the things I just wanted to highlight is when you have a teaching learning facilitator at the elementary level, you're supporting six grade levels with anywhere from seven to nine teachers on a grade level who were responsible for teaching English Language Arts. When you move into a secondary model, obviously you're looking at teachers six through 12. That department has approximately nine teachers in it. But that doesn't mean that you couldn't have a person who then also supports the humanities in ALA through, in social studies as well, and possibly even, you know, science and some of the other core areas. So should we move forward, I think we'd really need to consider where the greatest need is and where we see the greatest benefit. Ideally, we could use somebody K-12, but that's not, probably not a reality. So leave it at that for the moment.
Are you in favor of this position?
Absolutely. It was, it was a very big loss for us, losing our teaching learning facilitators. It really shifted. And we see the benefit, certainly with math, with Christine Rosner, so there's no question.
And do you, you're, I know you just said this, but I'm just gonna reiterate. You really wouldn't know yet. You would say, bring it on and then we'll figure out where the greatest need is in terms of where you would focus your energies.
I think that if, after this evening, like you'd like us to push forward after Dr. Harrison's presented all of this and you still think that this is something viable, I think the administrators certainly could come up with something and make a recommendation.
Yeah, so we see it as something with a, a great opportunity and benefit to our children. But in doing so, I wanna just draw your attention to the footnote that this is a consideration. So we're going back to that language of months ago. This has not worked into the figure. So if this is something that the board wants to support, we have to consider that within the context of the other objectives that you have financially for the community. So kind of looking to, to pass the microphone over to the board. We wanna have some more discussion, a little Q and A tonight. And we certainly wanna hear board members' thoughts, public's thoughts as well. And then we're gonna look for direction once again. Where do we need to go? We're at that point now, we're starting to fine-tune. So what are those next steps you need us to make? And in doing so, recognizing that that mix, next meeting is only a few days away on the 14th. But what's important to keep in the back of the minds for the board and the community, that the board needs to adopt the budget on the 21st. So what occurs tonight and occurs on the 14th is critical because that is defining what you're going to approve on the 21st. So with that said, Mr. Whitney, the meeting is yours again.
Thank you. So I think we're at the point now where we have gotten deep enough into our budget that hopefully we have solidified our opinions about what we like and don't like. And we can have spirited conversation about where we wanna go next. I know that each of you will have sort of specific ideas about, and questions about pieces that are in the budget. So why don't we try and start again with doing questions? And I think it's okay also if you wanna offer opinion. You know, in our last meeting, we really focused on questions in our first round and then went back and had opinion. But start with questions, opinions, and we can go down the road.
Okay, can we start with tier one? I just wanna make sure I understood this correctly. The adjustment in the technology lease, that was due to, you think that the school, the Smart School grant could cover this? And you said that's decided on by committee. What committee? Is it our own committee?
Yes, we, we would form a committee locally that would look to prioritize the needs that we would put into the grant. There's, one of the primary objectives in the grant is to increase connectivity to the internet in schools. So a Wi-Fi initiative would certainly address that.
Because I wouldn't wanna delay that, so I kinda wanna make sure that if we're removing it from the budget, you feel pretty confident it will be-
We're, we're pretty confident. And I also wanna say that also, that, you know, this is a commitment that we need to make. And when we're looking at moving forward, if there's a delay that comes in and with our other technology needs, there, there's other stop-gap measures that we could take. With carts, when we're utilizing, say, a iPad cart or a Chromebook cart, that we can have an airport attached to that, that we would still be able to access and use those devices as they're moving about. So there could be some delay in timing associated with that. I, I wanna be transparent with, with that. But it's an opportunity to look at, to use essentially what is free money to the school district, not to the taxpayers, because that was a bond on the state level last year, or in November. But at the same time, we're looking at a savings of $35,000 over a course of five years.
Okay, and the feeling on the ENL teacher path as opposed to a full-time position? I'm not exactly sure, based on your description. The caseload hasn't changed, but yet you still think we will qualify and meet the new requirements and the old requirements with just the existing one and a half plus an additional half?
So I'll ask Mr. Palermo to speak to it because he and the ENL teachers were involved in the conversations with the state folks.
So the, the difference is that the initial requirements, the new requirements that came out indicated that in most cases, 50% of the instruction had to be in an integrated setting. That was originally interpreted by both the state and presentations that I went to and by us as similar to our co-teaching model in special education where we have two teachers in the room and they're co-teaching in a general education environment. Clarification that came down recently and in subsequent presentations that I went to with the ENL teachers was that if the teacher, the ENL teacher is dual-certified, as both of our ENL teachers are dual-certified elementary and ENL teachers, then the integration piece can be simply them integrating the curriculum into their sessions when they pull the children out. So what that essentially does, instead of having the kids spread out over numerous different classrooms, we can pull them into one spot and, and serve them more efficiently. different classrooms, we can pull them into one spot and serve them more efficiently, thus needing fewer teaching hours and less of a teaching request in terms of this budget. So, we're still providing the maximum, the required numbers of hours of ENL instruction to our English Language learners. We're just doing it by in, by grouping them together, rather than having them spread across several different classrooms.
And we feel this will still be effective, obviously?
We do. It's akin to what we've been doing, and most of our students do test out of those services before they leave the elementary years. So, that's proven to be a successful model. I think the additional staffing will allow us to be even more successful, because it will allow us to provide that in a little more intensive manner.
Okay. Thank you. That actually clears, clears that up for me. Tier two, reducing the substitute budget. So, if I'm understanding you correctly, with the addition of the early release days and the delayed days, we, there'll be a reduction in the need of substitute teachers, but you also wrote custodian production, projections. How does that factor in here?
Yeah. So, we look at, we have separate line items as they relate to teaching substitutes and substitute custodians. So, we looked, we looked at it in a couple different ways. One, we looked at reconciling our budget and our expenditures as we move forward, and looking at what our trend has been. We've seen that we've had some excess funds in those lines over the last couple of years, and we think that that step that we're taking with the calendar for next year only adds value to what we're attempting to do here. So, we, we think that there's certainly going to be less of a need for substitute teachers from pulling teachers out during the school day for professional learning and things like that. So, we, you know, we went back and forth over this and crunched the numbers and felt comfortable that this was a responsible reduction.
But in the aspect, you mentioned custodian.
Mm-hmm.
So, how does that work with the custodians? I understood the teachers, the custodians for?
Mike.
I'm sorry. We've had, I'm sure you're aware that we've had a lot of turnover in the custodians, and two years ago, we had two custodians that were out for over a year, and we had substitutes filling those positions. So, we had to budget for those, because we knew they were going to be out. Now, in retrospect, we're looking at our budget again, and we have stabilized the custodial staff, so hopefully, we will not need as many subs.
Okay. Bev? Can I begin? Yeah. I'm done with my questions for the tiers.
Okay. So, I just had one question on, there's something in the budget that we really haven't discussed that I would like to bring up. I mean, there's a dollar figure in there for $40,000 for a greeter, and just in looking holistically at the things on your tiers and?
Oh, can I?
Oh.
I thought we were going through the tiers first in our comments and questions, and then if there was, then?
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry.
No?
I think it's fine.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
You can, yeah.
That's fine.
I was sort of saying that we were being a little less structured tonight, that we could kind of?
That's fine.
Because we're getting some, no, you're, you're?
Go ahead.
You're on par.
Anyway, so I was, I was just thinking, maybe we could have a discussion about that piece, because it seems, when I'm looking at everything, that the value of what we're getting for that, and kind of the overall fact compared to some of the other things on your tiers, and I just, I feel like it's appropriate for us to maybe discuss it a little further.
Sure.
And figure out if, you know, has merit, or, you know, where, where we all come out on it.
Yeah. So, it's when we discuss, going back to whichever meeting it was, with the movement of the district offices to Dow's Lane, Dow's Lane offices to the front of the building, the, the new main entrance to Dow's Lane would be in the front of the school. We'd move our current greeter to that location, because that's where our visitors, the majority of them for the school, would be arriving in the proximity to the office. It makes sense just from the operations of a school standpoint. And then, the type of business that we have with the district office is very different than a parent coming to visit a school to, for their child for a meeting, whatever the case may be. So, that we do have frequent visitors. You've all been in the office, you've seen the flow of traffic. So, the obvious that, that comes out is when we have faculty and staff members that are coming to the business office for human resource business, payroll-type business. That, that isn't necessarily of a concern, but we consistently have contractors, a lot of outside folks, that are coming in for meetings and business within the school district. We're the receiving point for the district. So, when there is a random person that wants to contact the school district for something, they are funneling their attention to the district office. So, we receive a regular flow of visitors. In doing so, we had concern about having these folks, some of whom we do not know, that would be arriving at the main entrance of the school, and then would need then to, once they sign in, and go through the normal protocols that any of our security guards would. You got to think what that next step is. So, does the security guard turn and say to this person that they don't know? They get to know parents, they get to know the regular visitors, they turn and send them to the office where they're addressed. But to turn and say, now, we want you to walk all the way down that hallway 50 yards, and when you go down there, where I won't see you, make a left and go up the stairway into the superintendent's and the assistant superintendent's office, or go upstairs to the business office. So, there's a concern just about having folks wander in the building that we don't know. So, we would be establishing a separate entry point where there would be accountability for the folks that come in, the visitors for the business office that have no business roaming our school, would be directly, and would directly be stopped there. We'd have a reception area in the lobby of the office, because you know, in the, the district office, we don't have a receptionist to greet people. So, they would be able to direct the people to sign them in, direct them to the business office, give a call to my office, give a call to Dr. Core's office, Ms. Miller's office, Mr. Knoll's office, and have everybody directed accordingly, and we know where folks are going. The second tier to this, that I think is, is vital as well, is that when we think about handicap access to the school, the handicap entrance still remains the current entrance to Dow's Lane, where there are ramps. It was cost prohibitive in the different levels of design to construct a handicap access to the, what will be the new front entrance to the school. So, there would be difficulty then in accessing and helping people gain access to the building if the security greeter was all the way on the other side of the building. So, we saw this as a security measure. We saw this as a customer service measure, and thought that it was a responsible investment for the district to make, as a reminder to certainly everybody that this $40,000 does not carry with it benefits. It's a contracted service with a company that we've been having very good experiences with the past two years.
Also, the PE classes.
Yeah. Do you want to speak to PE piece?
No, just that we're still going to have a flow of students coming through to PE, so there's this constant flow of kids moving back and forth with teachers. But it just seemed like that was a, that was a lot of going on there with no monitoring in terms of a security point of view.
Is there a buzzer system still in place in that back door? Is the buzzer system still intact in the back door? So, in other words, someone would just buzz somebody in?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because I actually didn't envision your, your visitors with the new construction. I didn't actually think they were going to the main, what the new main entrance would be. I had assumed, and possibly that was maybe my mistake, that they would be coming around to the existing door and be buzzed in.
That's my thought.
That's, so?
So, I guess the question is then, who's receiving that person being buzzed in? So, I'm just talking through this out loud as I'm thinking about it. So, we could say that Elaine has the other end of that buzzer on her desk, and that she would, you know, there would be camera, there's a little two-inch screen on them, and she would have that visual, and if she knows that Maria Kashkyn's coming for a meeting and the buzz sees Maria there, she buzzes Maria in. But then, when you think of all the contractors that are coming to meet with Gary, because Gary's offices are there, when you come to think about the vendors that come to meet with the different folks in the business office and people that we don't know, every buzz, Elaine's going to have to get up and go down and greet that person to ensure who it is, see what their business is, and then escort or direct the person accordingly.
But the thing that doesn't make sense to me is that now, there's no buzzer system, and someone just walks right in.
No.
No, there's a buzzer system, and there's a greeter. There's both.
Well, there's Connie.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're thinking of the district door. I'm talking about Dow's Lane.
Correct. But, but we're not, we're not attached to a school.
But the kids aren't around.
So, those doors aren't going to be locked?
No, they can't. They can't. Fire code, they can't be locked. And we, as Dr. Core just pointed out, the gymnasium, our PE classes are going back and forth all day long.
Right.
It's a complex situation. You know, if we had our druthers and didn't need to spend the money that way, we certainly would. I, I just, as we went through this process, and, you know, we saw it as something that was a responsible investment to be able to make. You know, it's something that we could revisit down the road possibly, if we're seeing a way of, that's, you know, that's, that concern isn't there. But, you know, that only access is, for us, is through that door. And when you think about the layout, so everybody in the audience, you picture where the current main office is, where Randy Meg's office is, the reception area, the clerical staff, and the nurse, faculty room, that space is going to be my office, it's going to be Reina, it's going to be Human Resources. Elaine is going to be there, Connie's going to be there. And then, when you go upstairs to the next level, current classroom directly above in the conference room, that's going to become the business office, and that's going to be Bev, Gary, and all the business office staff. So, when you think, you know, you're going to walk in, and there's going to be a waiting area where the current waiting area is, and then a series of offices constructed around it. So, it's going to be like a similar setup that we have now, where you can walk in by Connie, and there's an area, but there's no one directly there to receive somebody. And that's what the concern was. And the other?
And again, and the problem is, is that if that person comes in, because they've been buzzed in, and Elaine isn't there to greet them, they could walk through and be right into the?
And Elaine goes to lunch, and there's a day when Elaine is absent, and that's covered by relaying phones and, and an existing setup. You know, we survive where we are now, because we're our own building. And I got to say, there's times that you'll hear, and Reineck, and I'm sure Bev can count, not as much Bev, because they walk into the, literally into the business office, but on our end, you'll walk in, you hear a hello once in a while, and folks that are coming in, and Connie or Elaine are at lunch, and we're stepping out of our office to greet them. So, that hello is going to be into a school hallway.
Is it, I mean, when, is this something that was not thought of when the, the configuration of the office was, were proposed?
Well, I also think when the configuration of the offices were proposed was before Sandy Hook.
No. I mean, we were talking, we approved this thing last year.
No, I'm talking about the original design going back, before Chris was even here.
We, yeah, the original design was done in 1112.
Yeah. And because, so it's essentially an unforeseen cost.
I think it's a fair way of representing it, yeah.
Is it, is it possible in any way to reconfigure it so the entrance is from, there's a direct entrance to the district offices and not from the outside? I mean, it would be, it would be an architectural issue, but, but if you save $40,000 a year in perpetuity, it could quickly pay for itself.
I, I can't picture where that would be.
Well, I mean, the chairs walls with outside, I don't really know.
Yeah, they would, were you looking at exterior wall?
And the exterior doors for the lunchroom?
Isn't that downstairs?
But it's there on that?
The back door?
Yeah, the back door.
Well, how about, I, I can't picture it right now, but I'm just?
Yeah, but ultimately, there wouldn't be direct, direct access.
Have to construct it.
That you would have, you would have to construct it. We would have to, we've already awarded a bid, mind you, for, for the, the work, but it would have to, whatever the legal process to be to change that, but you'd have to go through all the layers of SED approval and, and design. I just don't know what would be feasible from that. We did not explore.
Yeah, because essentially, this is a door problem, right? And, and the other solution is to redo the doors in a way, or add a door, so you don't have the problem, and then you don't spend $40,000 a year for, from here to eternity.
My, my other thought, I mean, again, concerned about how it's an annual. It basically increases the cost of running the district office, which, almost being equal, yeah, I'd rather see the money directly in the classrooms. So, one of my other thoughts was, I know that we've also, we're short on support, and we've been adding back support positions. And, you know, we don't want a load factor, but could we consider perhaps doing like a part-time clerical position to do it? So, if we needed, say, nine to one, so then you would eliminate a load factor, but you'd also be able to have someone that could accomplish other things, other than just being a greeter when they're sitting there. Just trying to figure out how to make the most efficient use of our dollars. I don't know if it's possible, but it was, in my mind, maybe then we could have them doing something else that could be adding value instead of, you know, and again, some of the greeters are great, and some of them, it's great. So, you know, hopefully, if we set it up like this, maybe we're more guaranteed to get some added value out of it.
Maybe they could be part-time gym teachers and just go into the gym when the gym's working.
But?
The consideration, Michael, okay.
Do you, I mean, do you want comments on things?
If you'd like, if you want to?
I thought we're still on the questioning.
Well, we could do questions, yes.
So, go ahead.
I have no questions. Well, not the Python, but I have no questions.
Well, Robin, would you like to offer some comments?
Do you have questions, Phil, or are you?
Oh, I do.
Maybe you should do that.
Yes, I should. I, actually, I think it's more of a comment than it is a question. Well, my comment overall is that I'm still a little concerned about the fact that we're going up in headcount by, I believe the count is 4.2 when I added it up. I went to the back and just sort of subtracted out the ones that you subtracted out, and we're adding, you know, 4.2 people to our district. And I just worry that although lean years seem like a memory, not a distant memory, and seemingly, we're doing better now as a community, that lean years could be back again at some point in the future, and that adding headcount is generally unwise, because then you find yourself having to cut headcount. And I guess, you know, I know you've articulated the need for the clerical position at the high school, based on the amount of work that has been added, but I guess I'm just encouraging you to really be certain that we need to add 4.2 people back. You know, some of them, the school psychologist, you know, based on the caseload was fairly The maintenance staff person was persuasive, because effectively, he's paying for himself. You see where I'm going?
ENL was, is a requirement?
That question on the maintenance, on the clerical, I know last year, we had three clerical people that I believe we went to 12 months from 10 months, so we?
Was it two years ago, or last year?
Was that two years ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. So, I guess with this new one that we're adding, is it a 10 month or a 12 month?
Budget was for 12 months, was it? It was 12 months.
12, okay.
I thought that where, did we have the conversation about the maintenance? Because I thought the issue with maintenance was the question of whether the, I think the idea about paying for itself was that there are various in-school maintenance tasks that we now contract, have contractors come in and do, plumbers or whoever come in and do. And that we could save on that, not have to pay those people, because if we had somebody in-house to go around in the schools and do the different repairs. Did, did we examine and talk about whether we, a general maintenance person would have the sorts of skills and know how to do all the different plumbing repairs and electrical repairs, or whatever it is?
I think in our response to?
Would be written in their job description.
Yeah, be written into the job description. And when we did the, the cost-benefit analysis that I think appeared in our response to board questions from the March 10th meeting, Gary and Bev went through and identified particular work that we currently outsource, that this person would be able to do with the skill set they anticipate being able to hire.
Okay, so?
And this is a position that used to exist, and that was the skill set that the person had at the time? So, it was, we're not making up the job.
So, these people, people out there with these skill sets, yeah, okay, fine. I just didn't recall. It's, that's a piece of homework I did. Review, okay.
We got a lot of homework.
I get too much homework.
So that was kind of my comment. It was just a concern about adding four people. And I guess I was thinking that in the process of going through the tiers that you might have reduced the additional FTE request in a more meaningful way, rather than sort of using sort of little stopgap measures, which would be the reduction in the substitute budget and the, what was the very first tier? There was something that was, the, oh, the adjust of the technology lease, which is not really, you know, that's just sort of moving the cost into a different place in effect. And then I guess I also think that, and, you know, I said this to you on the phone the other day, that, that the state aid increase, given the uncertainty around that, we could almost put that aside and still try to achieve our cost savings without that money because there is some uncertainty around the conditions that we are going to receive that money under.
With respect to the latter point, Beverly and I talked about that, and we discussed it with council, and they should, said it should be included in the general revenues and should be accounted for as, as an expenditure. So in, in some sense, if we're putting that aside, my concern is that we'd be artificially inflating the tax rate, because then in some sense, I guess we could be using that money to account for something else. I think we need to approach the situation with APPR, with optimism in that we're, we're gonna get it done. I think there's a level of concern that our bargaining units would have, not wanting to be in a position where, you know, the failed negotiation would result in, you know, a financial impact for the district like that. But I, I guess I do wanna point that, you know, we, in those efforts, you could look at them as stopgap, or it's analyzing our existing funds to make sure we're maximizing them and getting the most out of them.
Yeah.
So I, I think there's benefit to the approach that we took. We did reduce 1.4 FTE in there between the world language and that. So we did acknowledge the costs associated with personnel. The items that we put on the table and those items that you mentioned, some of them really speak for themselves, whether it was the maintenance, whether it was the E and L, the psychologist, but those couple other ones, and when we speak to, you know, the, the psychologist in my mind goes really hand-in-hand with the increased special ed position at the high school. You can't, you need it both, you saw the numbers there.
Mm-hmm.
And the clerk, my gosh, we gotta support everybody in our school. And we talked about how that'll enhance customer service for everybody in the school, how it'll improve the efficiency of our administrators, it'll improve our operations, that we're not gonna have a snafu like, you know, we've had with some other issues along the way because we're gonna have more people to be able to manage the work. We shared the data associated with that, that we're significantly understaffed. For the public that wasn't here, it was presented that, we did a survey of similar-sized high schools throughout the region, and in our school, where we currently have three clerical staff members, where other schools had a minimum, I think it was seven and a half? Was it the number, seven and a half and beyond?
Minimum of five and...
Five and a half and beyond. So we look at similar schools that were already understaffed by two and a half employees to do the same level of work that we're doing. So that's where mistakes happen, and we wanna get better, and we see that as a real cog in the system of enhancing the high school.
I do have one simple question, which is with the 3.48 percent scenario, what is the budget-to-budget increase on that? I don't think it was in here, was it about two?
Which one?
Budget-to-budget.
The 3.48, that's the tax increase. What's the budget-to-budget increase that is driving that?
Without the tiers?
No, the 3.5.
Yeah, 3.5. That's the last tier.
The 3.5, that would be a 2.38 percent budget increase.
2.38 percent. Do we have that...
That's with one, two, and three.
You're saying budgets to budget.
Budget-to-budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
2.3.
I did some, I think there's...
And just so, what Bev has here is just looking specifically at the different tiers as presented with the budget-to-budget increase, but also tier one, two, and three with the addition of the ELA coach. So you could, the board could see what that looks like. Thanks. Bev always has something up her sleeve, doesn't she?
Yes, she does. Do we wanna talk about the ELA coach and what our feelings are about that? We didn't really have any conversation about that.
I am very much in favor of that, and I would like to see you guys explore that a little bit more. Because I do, having lived in the days with Joyce Chapman and Jen Delisi, I do think that this district definitely benefited, and we know that from also the math support that we've been receiving the past two years with Christine Rosner in that position. And my only other comment, that's some of the asks, I'm not saying elimination, but perhaps some of the new furniture that's being requested, maybe that could be tailored back a little bit. And, oh, she's got another...
I have another sheet.
Do we have to ask the right questions to get a sheet?
Bev has bugged your houses. She's tapped into your computers. I think there's more than you need there.
Okay.
Never bring my own device again.
I just wanted the board to have a detailed list of what is actually remaining in the budget. And I just wanted to illustrate that we have done already some due diligence as far as slashing the budget. The schools originally requested $74,000 worth of equipment, and we've narrowed it down to currently $27,000.
Um, right. I was not referring to these asks, I was referring to like the new office furnitures for different areas in the different schools.
The office furniture was for Artie's and the IT department moving down to some there because some of their furniture cannot move.
Yeah.
No, I was just asking, I, I think I came up with either 20 or $25,000 worth of, not this kind, not the kids, I know, we have the desks and the chairs and all of that and the...
Well, and there's clerical furniture for the new clerical position at the, the...
Right. All, I was just asking if that could be looked at, and perhaps maybe, I didn't know if it was all necessary this year, maybe tailored back, and if, just saying if you could look at it.
We, we certainly can look at it again.
And perhaps, you know, maybe next year, add some, maybe something has a little bit more life that you could live with, and then, you know, it just seemed like a...
I, I wanna, just as I say, and we're gonna look at it, and I, so I don't want you to think I'm, I'm being contrary here, you should go and look at some of the furniture that we have. We have stuff that's really falling apart and things that, you know, whether you go into offices, we said in, you go in the technology office and Jesse's office, they're, literally they have countertops that are built in to the wall. But everything we pretty much have is, is for the most part across the district has been purchased piecemeal throughout the years and been moved around, that we don't have sets of office furniture. So we really have stuff that's, that's pretty, pretty ancient, and some of it won't fit into the spaces that we're moving to. And the rest of, some, we're certainly, certainly keeping components of it, but I, I just don't know if it survives the move because as it is now, we have things propped up with that, but we'll look at it.
Okay.
Should we hear from...
The ELA coach?
Yeah, let's hear the ELA.
You know I'm in favor of it. But I just wanna hit on two, two reasons why. I actually went on Tuesday night, I guess, because we didn't have a board meeting, I went to the Doubletree, and Rob Astorino hosted a meeting, and they had a speaker peg listed, I guess. She talked a lot about, it was, she's very one-sided, I will say. She talked a lot about kind of the downfalls of the common core and all of the requirements that come along with the homework of it. But one of the points that she brought out, and it kind of, to me also drives home the need for this, is one of the things that she said about the, the common core in conjunction with the state test being the effectiveness rating for the teacher, is that what you effectively do to a lot of teachers inadvertently is they end up focusing on the middle because they figure the real bottom is gonna be hard to get them up in terms of their, you know, get them to achieve higher. They get rated on improvement. Right. So very, a teacher then is gonna look at the bottom bottom and say, God, hard to get them to grow. The top ones are already at the top, there's no growth there. So she said effectively, the concern is that they end up focusing in the middle, and that leaves the two ends out there. And I actually feel like in this budget, we did a good job of looking at the bottom side and saying, well, we don't wanna leave them, you know, adding AI asks, we're, we're looking at those learners, and we're trying to figure out how to support them as needed, and thank you for the numbers that you gave. But to me then, just in terms of that statement, I think, God, that still kinda leaves that one area, which I actually think the ELA coach will definitely help differentiate in the classroom and make sure that everybody is a benefit planet. And then the second piece of it is, I think over the course of the year, it says also, we often challenge you guys to figure out how do we measure the quality of instruction, and how do we work at improving, how the instruction is delivered in classroom, and how it's, how do we move that? And that's very different to me, or somewhat different than professional development. One is the teacher learning, and the other is them delivering what they learn. And I feel like this piece, more than anything else that we do, really can address that issue. This, to me, speaks more to helping us to ensure that, or at least help ensure that the, we're addressing the instruction, and we're supporting the teachers as they deliver instruction in the classroom to the best way that we can. So for those two reasons, I, I actually think this would be so beneficial to the students. And I also think it counters my concern, which was that, you know, I see a lot of other things in the budget, but, you know, where, where do I see in this budget, you know, things that are really gonna directly, not that everything will benefit the kids, but really directly go right to the, the heart of who we are and what we do. And, and to me, this really meets that needs. And in fact, to me, I'm definitely willing to go a little higher on the budget if it means being able to put this into the classrooms.
So a passionate thumbs up.
John?
I don't have any strong views. I mean, what, what Maria and, about this, the, but what Maria and Robin said sounds, sounds reasonable to me, and, you know, I, so I'm, you know, I think the question is, what kinda numbers does that leave us in the budget? And where do you guys think we should be? You, the rest of the board, think we should be in terms of tax numbers? Because, you know, they're not, they're, they're, we're talking about the kinda tax numbers that we should be confident that we're really doing something material to improve the quality of education in this district if we're gonna go out and ask the community to provide. And, and we're asking them in reality to provide more than just these increases because we have a big savings in pensions this year, that we're, we're using that up, and then we're asking for more. So I just, you know, wanna, it sounds like the, the English ELA coach is a positive thing in terms of the quality, and I, I get that from Maria and Robin's endorsement of it. I just think we have to, you know, everybody should think hard about what the overall tax number is, and are we really getting the right return, you know, in terms of educational quality from that investment? I mean, I'm all for spending money if we get something good out of it, because that's, I think, why people come to Irvington, is to get high-quality education, but they expect it, and we ought to deliver it.
Thank you. So I think maybe you're hearing an endorsement of pursuing the job description...
Sure.
...for the ELA coach. And I guess I would add to it that, you know, since we're always asking you to go above and beyond, and we're a board that likes to have its cake and eat it too, that we would like to be able to have this ELA coach in our budget, but stay at the 3.5 percent. So good luck with that.
So, so I guess in, in looking to achieve that objective, you know, you used the term, and I wanna have some fun here now, you said about stopgap measures. We can, if we achieve that through other efficiencies, I think that's still acceptable.
Yes, it is.
I just wanna, I wanna be clear, because, you know, there's things in this budget that I feel like I would go down fighting, because I look at my colleagues and I know what they need in the classroom. I look at our children and I know what they need. So I'm really hard-pressed to go and, to, to sacrifice these things, because where we've had conversation, where we talk about, you know, focusing on supports and having that image that we're serving one segment of our school population, but if I look to my colleagues in the audience and to my right, we're convinced that's serving every child because of what it does for the classroom, what it does for the school. We could probably go on all day about what a psychologist or what the clerical position will do. So I wanna deliver on the ELA piece, you know, like, when I wrote that slide last week, there was, there was no pain in doing it, Robin. So, you know, I, I wanna achieve that objective, but I wanna remain my, maintain my commitment to those other things.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Oh, wait, John.
You know, we have, how much, how many million, how many millions of dollars is our existing budget?
57 is this number, right?
You know, and, and we're not, is there nothing in the existing budget that is, is less important than the ELA coach that if we had to do, if we really wanted the ELA coach, there isn't something somewhere that we could do without? Are we essentially saying that everything else there is more important than the ELA coach?
We could give up our salaries.
Our salaries, we've done that. We did that, unfortunately, before I showed up here. We make less than the village trustees. You know, I just have a hard time believing that everything we have is so essential that we can't find, and so incredibly supportive of excellence in our education that there isn't some money somewhere that it has to be paid for through increased taxes.
And, and I think we've demonstrated some of our effort in those ways by looking at the creative way in which we are bringing back the, the social work position, by eliminating two positions to create one new position.
Right.
So there's some, some value add there in, in being creative with how we're utilizing personnel. Going through and looking at these reductions we were making, I think it's going after some of that. I think we need to be mindful, and again, it's in one of the budget Q and A docs that we put out on this budget journey, referencing the, the reductions that have been made over the years. And I think if we go back to my first year in the district, when we were creating last year's budget, and the community, I can remember sitting in this room, and, and actually, I think it was Allison standing at the mic and saying, be more ambitious. And there was like a turning point that night in this room, and a different type of conversation that we started to have. And we looked at all those numbers and all those, I forget how many, 20, whatever, positions that have been cut over the years, and we thought, we were bare bones. So our conversation that we've had, I think from that night forward, has been to start to build programs for our kids. We've added sections at the high school, we've added additional AP courses, we've brought back an assistant principal where we needed it to better support our teachers and kids. So I think there's a balance. When we talk about the clerical position, I think that's just one little example of where, we're understaffed, and I think you could find numbers like that everywhere. There aren't many district offices that you walk into and you don't have a secretary sitting there. So that's, that's something for us to look at, and that idea to see if we could make that work on some kinda part-time basis for comparable money. So we're bare, pretty bare bones, and so I, I don't say that to be flipped, John. I just say that living in, in this environment on a daily basis and, and spending my life in schools, I, I see us in a spot where we're, we're pretty, pretty lean right now. But we'll go back and we'll look again, there's no question. We have a lot of work to do in two days, so let's be mindful, two days.
The meeting's Tuesday.
Well, you have your mission. Good luck.
I'm looking forward to it.
So let's hear from the community, because I think it's appropriate to have community members step in and give us some comments on the budget, so we'll kinda skip to Agenda Five, or effectively, we're expanding our Agenda 4.1. Stella, the mic is yours, but please tell us who you are. I think you have to step a little closer to the mic. There you go.
I need a microphone.
Not really, but...
The TV does.
Okay. Yeah, it's nice to be back. I've been flying back and forth, as most of you know. First, just a little bit of history, and I know, I don't know who was on the board, I don't know who remembers, but... know who remembers, but the entrance to Dow's Lane has been addressed and some options were kind of thrown out there. One of the things was building a cubicle, because one of the issues with having a clerical person is having sensitive information out there. One of the suggestions was building a keyed cubicle with a window that somebody could be more efficient, work there, have multi-functions, and also be greeter, where it is keyed and you don't have to worry about confidential information, just to throw it out there and give you a little bit of history. Second, the maintenance, and Gary, I'm sure you already know this, and we've run into it with the Budget Task Force. I don't know what the job description is, but one thing to be mindful of, because it's bitten us in the butt, when you change from outside vendors to in-house, you can't go back. Right?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Oh, okay. So it's, it's stuff that we are, okay.
You can always come back if you want to. You can always step back up to the mic.
Oh, one more question. I know what it was. With the testing, which was really the reason that I had come. Oh, two things, but I'll bring, y'all know what I'm going to bring up. But the testing, what are we currently, oh, we're not talking.
Well, I was just, because we're really just doing, just doing budget stuff now. Okay. Anybody else have any other comments on the budget? And again, we're just trying to keep it focused on the budget so we can close out that agenda item. I set the rules.
Hello, my name is Eric Oly. Yeah, just stuff I've been hearing today. $119,000 or $110,000, it's not $119,000 that we're going to get in extra aid? That's just what I read in the.
Yeah, so there's, Bev can explain the adjustments. So you look at numbers, state aid figures adjust through the year based on enrollment and other factors. So that, the numbers that are published look specifically at what was granted. It doesn't show what is actually being issued. So there's, those numbers that are published aren't real numbers to what we see necessarily as a revenue.
And the 110, we're adding to the budget because my previous state aid figure was estimated. So the difference between what I had estimated and what is now actual is not 119, it's 110.
Okay. Oh, I understand. So my question is, if, that is obviously contingent on the adoption of the new APPR that the SED comes out with in June, June 30th or whenever, why would we not be able to adopt that APPR? Does that have to be negotiated with the teachers' union?
Yes, it's mandatorily negotiated.
That's the reason why. But none of that 3.5 million dollars in regular funding we see during the year is, is contingent on that, just the extra money?
Well, I would say aspects of all, all that money is contingent on many things. You know, if we were not to fulfill many state regulations, we could be penalized financially. But nothing as specific as negotiate this and have it approved by this date. State did something similar in 2012, but there was certainly much more lead time and flexibility on districts in how they're negotiating. But to your, to your point, we don't have other pressures upon us that is leveraging money like that today.
So is every teacher evaluate, every change in the teacher evaluation system has to be vetted with the union? Is that, is that the reason why we have to?
The components that are associated with APPR are.
They are, okay.
But mind you, I just want to say that the new APPR plan really closes the door on a lot of things that were negotiable in the past. So there's, there's not as much to actually negotiate. So there's actually going to be less on the table to debate than there was in previous years.
Oh, and I, just one more thing about looking at the different tiers and the need for the ELA instruction. If, I would just assume it'd be possible to do, say, a Tier Two budget increase and then take something out of the Tier Three to pay for the ELA instructors, so that you don't have to, you don't have to increase the budget by any more than the Tier Two costs.
Those are reductions.
Yeah. So if you were to do this budget right here on Tier Two.
To cut the.
The more extreme budget reduction. Would you take the budget reductions from the Tier Three? Is that, that's the more extreme one? And use those budget reductions to pay for the ELA instructors?
So, so basically be adding back, you take the Tier Three reductions and then you add back.
Other cuts, but if you need to do that on Tier Two, you could just use the same cuts from the Tier Three.
Oh, you mean if you decide on the 3.5?
So I, I think Mr. Oly's making a recommendation that the board revise its guidance to the administration and go at a Tier Two finance level, but use some of this, these savings to achieve the other objective.
Right. I was giving them a tougher challenge because I was basically asking them to go find another $100,000.
It's not clear, have we made a recommendation to? I'm not sure. I'm not, it's not clear.
Oh, you mean in terms of Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three?
I didn't hear us do that.
I thought I did, but.
Maybe you did. I didn't, I think you did.
Well, I saw.
We're here to share many thoughts, so go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. No, I have no idea.
Why don't we let, why don't we go back and we can always revise. So please, Eric, continue.
Oh, and just one more. Is it, you know, now I'm really, really, really wary of any sort of grants that our school gets, because the grants seem to cost more money than they actually, we actually get. The Smart School grant, does that come with any, any sort of strings attached?
Not that far aware of it. It's money that's been bonded. It's not something that you have to sustain. We have to put together a committee that contributes to the development of the plan by those standards. I referenced one of them is, you know, internet connectivity. There's other things that you could do towards security and things like that, but not like we're talking security, but like people that didn't have buzzer systems in their schools and the like. And installing cameras and things like that, which we have around the high school campus. But it is, we have a set dollar amount. You meet the standards, you write your grant. From what we understand, actually, Mr. Lubinski is going to a workshop in two weeks where they're rolling out the tool that you're supposed to use to write the grant. From what we've seen, we see this as a fully viable option. And if you look at all the vendors that hit us with email on a daily basis, I probably get three or four from companies that build wireless infrastructure, remote learning systems. And in all their propaganda, they, they talk about building out wireless systems and increasing connectivity in schools. So we would fully expect it's there. I think it's $274,000. And the Wi-Fi takes up, you know, I think $170,000 of that money.
Thank you. Allison?
Allison Wagasback. I'm just, first of all, thank you again to all of you for all of your hard work. This looks like a really solid budget overall and addressing a lot of the issues and the concerns with facilities and academics. My two cents on the ELA coach, sounds like you all believe in it, but I do as well. So I'm happy to hear that. I think it's something that could enhance the education for a long time to come. And that's of high value. I also happen to be, Shari and I, obviously, as you know, co-presidents of the PTSA. And while I can't guarantee anything, because we would have to go to our exec board, there definitely are things in this budget that I think we might be able to grant and might be able to make some space for the, the coach, not pay for the whole thing, obviously. But, you know, I see $16,000 in iPads and just $1,100 in the bulletin boards. And there may be a couple of other things. So I just would ask you guys to ask us.
So if Mr. Whitney lets us go home early, we'll conference call on my ride home tonight.
Sounds good.
Thank you for the offer, PTSA. We love that. Ms. Lenz?
Just another question, Bev. I know that we spend a lot of money on LightPath. Have we explored other options and, and other solutions that are available now that weren't available previously?
Our internet service, voice over IP.
Techno, the LightPath connection.
So I, oh, that wasn't, sorry, I didn't do that close. So each year, as you know, I can name the characters who we all deal with, who you know. So Mario and Micah and Edgertech, and along with Jesse Lubinski, they assess where we are. They're always looking at new technologies. They're always looking for efficiencies. So we certainly can go back and ask them that question specifically. But I would say that they actually do that on a regular basis to ensure that we're working at an efficient level. But we could certainly go back and just confirm that.
Yeah. And if the techno, I mean, maybe get some info from the community on options that they may not know are available, because that does cost us a lot of money. And also I would recommend, I'm an advocate of having the ELA coach position, because I was in the days of Joyce. But having a, a more defined needs and goals before it's actually approved, you know, besides having a job description, be Joyce Chapnick. So.
Thank you. All right. So let's continue on with the point that John brought up, which is, are we in favor of at least this ask, knowing that we have another budget meeting ahead of us before we have to approve this budget, another board meeting before we have to approve the budget, so that we have one more iteration to go through? But the question is before us, do we want the administrators to include the ELA coach and try to stay at the 3.5% number? Or we could also go with Eric's suggestion, which is allowing the overall increase to go to 3.75.
What do you, where do you, what do you, what do you think?
My feeling is that we should, as I recommended, that we should ask the administrator to come up with a budget that stays at 3.5 and funds the, the ELA coach.
Okay.
That was my recommendation. And I assume that you would be supportive of that. But it was possibly the wrong assumption.
I mean, I feel like there's wiggle room. There's a little wiggle room. Yeah. There's some space in between. I've got to think as close as we can come to 3.5. The better it would be for taxpayers.
Yeah. You know, if Chris finds 76, not 96, you know, we're willing to negotiate.
Is that okay?
Yeah. I mean, I think that, you know, lower taxes are better than higher taxes, other things equal. So.
Sure.
Okay.
3.5% it is. So there's our guidance.
3.75 it is. Good.
All right. Thank you.
Good. We'll have a busy weekend.
Yeah. Well, that concludes our budget discussion, unless there are any last comments from anyone.
I was just going to say goodnight.
Goodnight to our audience here.
To our administrators.
Yes, to our administrators. Safe travels.
It's an early night, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's Thursday. They're not used to this.
That's right. So our next, you know, I, I think what I'll do out of mercy to our audience is allow the community to speak now about other items on the agenda. So essentially, I'm, I am moving 5.0 up a lane. And I guess, do we need to approve that change in the agenda? No, it's okay. Yeah, it's all right. Okay. So go ahead and ask questions about anything else on the agenda, please.
First, I had a question about the capital reserve funds that you want to put on. Is that on the agenda?
I think you can ask the question. It's okay.
I was trying to understand why, and I talked to a couple people today, why do we feel the need to have another reserve fund?
You want to, I don't think Bev fully heard your question.
Oh, I, it's my understanding, we're putting on the ballot to start another reserve fund?
Right.
I'm just trying to understand what, why we feel that that's necessary.
And allow me to start then, because I misheard your question, not Bev. That's why she looked to me.
Oh, okay.
You know, I have to say, Della, when, you know, when, in the beginning of the presentation, when there was a bullet that talked about fiscal responsibility, there was another one that talked about being able to maintain our facilities. It's very common for school districts to have a capital reserve fund, where we're actually taking monies and investing real-time money in the bank rather to support needs down the road. So we need a proposition from the voters to be able to create it. So we need the consent of the public. But then we also need the consent to spend the money. So what we're essentially doing is, much like you or I would, to be able to have, put some money away in the bank so we can do some repairs on, on your home, we're looking for that opportunity, if there's monies at the end of the year, if there's opportunities, the budget money for a deposit into that account, to be able to offset future expenditures. So when we look, we just, the voters just approved, as you well know, a $4.6 million bond. Well, if we had a million dollars in that reserve account, it could have been $3.6 million that the community would have been asked to vote. And then we'd have been paying interest on only $3.6 million.
Well, I guess my question is, is we currently have two and a quarter million in unassigned and another 400,000 in assigned, not including the, we have about eight million in total general reserve fund, right?
No, we don't have, we have.
For tax certs, another.
Well, tax certs, they're, they're going dwindling rapidly.
Yeah.
So that is untouchable.
Like I said, I'm all for a healthy reserve fund.
Yeah. And then the unreserved fund balance is at the state level of 4%. That is used to get us over the summer. This year, there's no borrowing in the budget, because we're going to utilize that funding to get us through the summer. We're not borrowing, so we're saving money.
Which we always do, but it's at two and a quarter million.
Right. That's two and a quarter million. Right. We have a lot of bills that come due in the summertime. We don't get tax money until the middle of October.
So we actually go down in our tax reserve by two and a quarter million?
No, not the tax reserve, the unreserved fund.
The unassigned fund, which is about two and a quarter million.
Right. That money is available to us. It's in a savings account. So we can use that money. And then it, it's just cash flow, so that we don't have to borrow.
And how much of it is it, how much of it do we use to get us over the summer?
Sometimes it's a lot more than that. In the past, we've had to borrow like three million for a tax anticipation.
Tax anticipation note.
Right. So if we didn't have that two, we would have to have borrowed five. This year, I think that we will have enough that we can support our district without borrowing it. But those funds are actually needed. They're needed for that. You also have to maintain a healthy balance in order to get a good bond rating. And that is proof, and I will attest that, we just did the bond refunding. Initially, we were going to save four and a half million. Then it was five million. After our latest Moody's rating on our finances, we're saving $6 million, because we're getting lower interest rates because of the stability of the school district. So it's all relevant, that you really need to maintain that unreserved fund balance. The reserved 422 is part of your budget for the current year.
What, the assigned?
Yes. The assigned is part of your budget. If you spent every penny of the $56,294,000 of this year's budget, you would have expended that 400 assigned, because that's part of it. That's the first line item in your revenue side of your budget.
I guess, because this is, and we've gone over it in the Budget Task Force, this is the first time I've ever heard that we use two and a quarter million dollars to cover us for, that we go, we deplete our reserve fund.
During, during the summertime, we have debt service payments we have to make, health insurance payments.
Which we get back.
Yeah. It's a, Della, I think what you're, there's maybe two things. Number one is, I would say that given the complexity of what you're asking, it would be good if you maybe.
Maybe also with.
Take it offline with, with Bev. But the second thing I would say is that the, the part of your question is about cash flow, right? Because the fund balance is used as a cash flow measure. And if that cash does get depleted, because we're waiting for the tax receipts to come in, then we do go and borrow money. As I know, I, we, since I've been on the board, we have definitely issued tan notes, because I remember Jim McCann talking about it since he's a bond guy, you know. So we have used, we've issued a tax anticipation note that we use as part of cash flow management. And then, when the tax receipts come in in the fall, we pay, we pay back the tan and we refill the fund balance as we are allowed to, according to the law. But that's my layman's way of explaining it. I think you should hear it from, from Bev. Eric?
Am I allowed to ask a question referencing the district communication today?
Yes, you are.
This is, thank you very much for the communication on the testing. I think it was much needed by the community to help. by the community to help answer a lot of questions. And my question is specific to a passage in there that says, "The scores, I assume, of the Common Core tests are used as part of multiple measures associated with student placement and program qualifications, such as academic intervention services or accelerated programs." I understand the academic information services, intervention services, but I, I don't understand the accelerated programs, and I would like a little bit of clarification on what accelerated programs that the, are, the Common Core.
Good timing, Dr. Core. So, so just for clarity, Ms. Doley was asking a question about the state data being utilized for placement purposes, indicated that he understood how it was used to help identify students that receive AIS, but clarity, seeking clarity on how our, how it is utilized for some accelerated programs, so I don't know if you, want to speak to the math?
Sure. So, the placement, I'll do fifth to sixth grade math, always use seven data points for kids to be recommended into the accelerated math program in sixth grade. The, previously, the state assessment, so I'll use fifth grade, we would give the assessment in April, and we would use, we would score the tests ourselves, so we would use the raw data as our fifth grade data point. As a result of not having any of that data back early enough, they now use a practice test, which we, which, which the teachers score themselves, so it's, all the, all the grades give practice tests to kids in preparation for the actual testing day, and they use that as their, as that seventh data point.
They use a practice test that they give in, in part.
In fifth grade, so that just.
Not the actual Common Core test.
Well, it's a practice test of the Common Core.
All right, so if the job was to opt out of testing, they could still take all the practice tests?
Yes.
That would not affect their.
Exactly.
Okay, I think, I think that's really, really clear in this, this passage.
But can I clarify something else, just so that you know? In other words, we would never have exempted, so let's say we had a student who came to Irvington from another state and didn't have a state score, and let's say they came in fourth grade, and now it came time for fifth grade and to do placement. We always accommodate, in other words, we would never penalize a student for not having one of those data points that didn't exist. So they would adjust the score expectation, and they would do it in a, using a formula, so in other words, they would, they would, normally for the fifth to sixth grade, 28 is usually the number that, is the number they shoot for, so for instance, a student scoring between 25 and 28 gets into the program, so they would make that adjustment by eliminating that seventh data point. So I guess I just want, we would never penalize a student for not having a score.
But the flip side is, it often is, like, if a kid's score is a four on the state test, and they were borderline with all the other data points, it often was the deciding factor in, in kind of saying, oh my god, they really should be in the accelerated, I mean, versus.
Because four was going to be from over a year before that.
Well, no, in the old, in the old days, in the old days, there were definitely kids who, right, right, but now it's not an issue anymore, right, now it would be the four from the prior year.
It still is, it always included the four from the prior, it always included the score from fourth grade.
So the fourth grade is included.
The fourth grade's accurate, yes, the fourth grade's score.
The fourth grade is in that.
To get into sixth grade accelerated math.
It was both, it was fourth, and then the raw score, what happens is, we give the assessment, then the state scores it and scales it, so when you get your child's score, it'll be a 1, 2, 3, or 4, because it's a scaled score. So for fourth grade, we always had that information, because it was a year later. For fifth grade, we had just given the assessment, but we ourselves scored it, so we had a raw score. So we would use a raw score versus a scale score, which we used for fourth grade. So, yes, if it's, so if your child opted out of fourth and fifth grade, they would be missing two data points, they'd be missing the fourth grade data point, I should say, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense to me, but it doesn't seem like there's so much penalized of that.
Well, no, and that's what I'm saying, we would never penalize a student for that, so we'll have to adjust.
I honestly think that you should clarify this data, and honestly, since this came out, I was on training, and I've gotten five, five communications from people in the village who were really, really concerned about this, and putting mine on white, because I, I think this is a really influential thing to say, but what you're not saying, I think what you mean, you're saying. So, this is very concerning to me, this data, right? Is there any way that the district can clarify that to the?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it, Eric, yeah.
Can I ask a question about the state score, kind of to follow up on, just curious? So if, if there's opt-outs in a teacher's class, then clearly there's no growth associated with the opt-out student.
The other test would not be scored.
It's one less data point for that teacher's growth factor, okay, I just was thinking about that.
Yep. All right, so I think we can move on now, unless, you, do you have anything else?
Just one more statement.
Okay.
With the testing, and I agree with you, Chris, on the better districts not being, not included in, in the APPR, I don't think it's a good idea. My question is, is, everybody's kind of in panic mode now, mostly because teachers are getting evaluated. Testing isn't anything new, this has been going on forever, the biggest thing is evaluating. What are we doing? Because everybody's in panic mode, because we had opportunities to find evaluations, to do a better job, and we really haven't. So now the state is stepping in and kind of saying, okay, well, we're going to do it for you. I know that it's been brought up in the past about, I'm not saying that you didn't do anything, I'm just saying we could have done a better job. Things that have been brought up in the past, like exit interviews, why are people leaving the school district? Are we looking at what is unsatisfactory, what are we lacking? And trying to do it within ourselves, so that when the state steps in, we can also say, well, we're doing this, you know, it's kind of like an auditor coming in, if you can just show what you are doing. I don't know if the board wants to take focus on that, on how we can improve ourselves without the state kind of stepping in.
I'm not sure exactly how to answer the question, other than that, the, the part that Chris mentioned earlier is that we are going to have to use the new restrictions or the new requirements from the APPR as part of our negotiation with teachers, but the, the amount that can be talked about or negotiated is actually quite small, because 50 percent of their rating is going to come from test scores, and then.
Thereabout somehow, it's very unclear what it's going to be.
So there will be less, and that, that part will be the first thing that we have to deal with, because we have a deadline on that, obviously, that's something that we will have to focus on.
Oh, absolutely.
In terms of going beyond that, to evaluate, you were asking about evaluating teachers in a different way, an additional way?
Well, one of the ways that it has been brought up in the past is doing exit interviews with the kids that have left the school district.
Right, so I guess where I was going, what I was going to say is, so.
That was one example.
Right, anything else that would actually go into, and I'm really taking your thunder here.
I think we're looking at two different things.
Yeah. I think you're talking about customer service, kind of surveys, that are not related to specific teachers, we certainly could be doing that.
Well, it could both, it would be a way for the school district to have an understanding of the teacher.
But it, yeah, but it can't be really, it can't be, what I was going, is it can't, it can't be both, because in order to use the feedback that we would be getting through some non-traditional method, we would have to negotiate that with the teacher, the teachers' union, in order to give them, in order.
May I interject?
Sure.
I think you're both saying beautiful things, but you're talking about different things a little bit here. I, I think you're, I think we're melding a couple topics, and talking about teacher evaluation, and we could sit down and talk, and I'll passionately disagree with some of the things you said, and, and I think when you look at APPR and what's happening, it has nothing to do with Irvington. There's a lot of politics, there's a lot of, a lot of districts that are underperforming across the state. Do we want to do better in Irvington? We absolutely do, but in Irvington, we're still a top 5 percent district in the state of New York. So APPR isn't because of districts like New York, or districts like Irvington across New York. So when we step back and we look at what I'm hearing you say, is that for another tool, for another lens, to get an understanding of maybe people's satisfaction, and to get feedback from folks that are leaving, as you would in an exit survey, we could collect that data, it would not be able to be integrated into a teacher evaluation, but it could inform our thinking and planning in and around program experience, in that, should we receive positive or negative feedback in that tool?
Yep.
Yeah, and I wasn't saying anything against the school and, and the teachers, because we have great teachers, as we see in our own kids, but I'm just saying, if the, on the flip side, I'm with you, that I don't think that districts like ours should be excluded from the APPR.
But I noted your suggestion, something, some.
We've actually talked about doing some kind of feedback mechanism, and the Communications Committee that Robin and I are on, because, you know, it would be interesting to have more of a sort of systematic feedback mechanism from the community.
That would be great, yeah.
Maybe we used to do community conversations, I mean, there's different ways to interpret that, but, yeah. I, kind of one more question on the state test.
Sure.
Just Eric's question reminded me of something, I think it was eighth grade, that the science state test was actually used as the final in the, for the grade, do we still do that, and if we do, what would happen if someone opted out from that?
That's a good question, I have to find out.
I just, I was, because I remember I didn't.
Eighth grade science.
One of the sciences, because I remember I didn't, I didn't realize that, and I sent my kid to school with the, don't worry about it, just a state test, and then it turned out it was his final grade for the year.
Oops.
So it was factored in in a different way.
Oops.
Yeah, oops. So I just, that's the case, I think that's something we need to work out.
Yeah, they're not opting, she's talking about the state.
Eighth grade state assessment, right.
Yeah, state assessment, our sidebar was, well, we know how regions are utilized within grading, I can't think of that.
I'll find out.
Okay.
John, did you have a comment?
It was just that the, you know, I think there are, at least broadly in APPR, there are options, the, the part that's locally derived, whatever that's called, there are options in how that's done, and our district chooses as one approach. My understanding is that among the conceivable options, they'd have to be negotiated and everything, would be a parental component, getting parental feedback as part of that.
I don't think.
That was, in the, in the first, in the first iteration of this, the new version actually, so right now, we currently, 20 percent accounts for the teacher's score from the state, so right now, you know, we have the 20-20-60 formula, so 20 percent is the state growth score.
Yeah.
20 percent is the local measure that we give, that's the assessment that we choose to give.
But it's a set assessment.
Yeah, and then 60 percent is observation and evaluation. The recommendations from the state actually increase that growth, the growth component to count for 50 percent.
Based on, yeah, okay, and then what happens to the other 50?
Other 50 percent is the observation and evaluation, which includes the site concept of using outside evaluators. I mean, you know, the complication is, I think, one of the things that parents are feeling and sensing, and kids are feeling, they're feeling the teacher's stress, and right now it's only 20 percent. So that 20 percent, in all likelihood, it's not that it couldn't affect a teacher, it could, it can, absolutely, but to a certain degree, because we're controlling 60 percent and 20 percent. By increasing the 50 percent, I think that that's really where we're at the greatest risk, that we have teachers who are being put under, really, like undue pressure, it's just not appropriate.
Well, especially because of the methodology around the whole growth measurement is so flawed.
Yeah, and the other piece that I would just highlight, that I think is problematic, is you only have a small subset of teachers who actually get their score from New York State. The majority of our teachers will get their score through the slows, through the student learning objectives, which we create ourselves, but with limited validity and reliability as a testing process. So it's, so we're not even evaluating our teachers equally across.
Right.
And to that point, and maybe that's the answer, but, you know, we heard Diane Ravitch speak, you know, the point that many teachers' courses aren't even measured in the state tests, how are they going to accommodate that for the 50, I mean, if it's only 50 percent, such a huge percentage of their evaluation, and if there aren't even tests to be associated with their subject area?
Well, I think some of that, some of the changes that they're putting down, so the state is now saying that they're going to have to approve our, right now, it's fairly open, what our approach is to creating those slows, those student learning objectives, it's quite open-ended. They're now going to, they want to define what is acceptable and what's not acceptable, which in theory is, is better in some ways, the problem is, in practice, they can't really do that successfully, I think is our assumption right now, so.
I think taking all of this, and then marrying it with what you said earlier, the whole issue of after three years of ineffective, you have to let someone go, I think teachers are understandably really nervous, because they could feel like, God, I got a class that's really difficult, that has a lot of struggling kids and a lot of smart kids, and I could easily get three years of ineffective if that grade becomes so important.
And we've seen some of our best teachers actually just, and again, it was only 20 percent, but get a score that was not commensurate with what you would say is parents' or kids' experiences.
That's scary.
It's very upsetting, actually.
I believe the state's also adjusting the growth model that they're going to be utilizing, so it's not just looking at, so if you picture, if you line a, 100 kids' test scores up, all right, and then you look them in deciles, and then you compare with that group of kids' move, and that's how they're measuring the growth from year to year, they're going to be looking at more of a longitudinal approach, where it's just not going to be single bullets in time for those kids and how they perform to their deci, within their decile, they're going to be looking at those students' growth over a period of time, so it's, the formula, I think, is supposed to evolve, but again, we haven't seen what that is.
You're almost taking that teacher's influence and mitigating it, I mean, because then if it's over a series of years, the continued growth, the last teacher's getting judged on the prior teacher's success rate.
But you, you measure the same cohort to cohort, and you see the impact, and you can see where those kids are supposedly. Statisticians explain that as to be the more reliable way of doing it, and it's been, been utilized in certain places in the country.
Okay.
It's been utilized in certain places in the country, and they're using the models to be truer to what the performance is.
Why don't we move on to our next subject, 4.2, good night, Eric? Which is the discussion of the role and responsibilities of the Policy Committee, which I think came out of a discussion we had in our last board meeting. Good night, Della. So I turn it to our Policy Committee to initiate the discussion, and Robin and I will jump in.
John?
Well, I think the issue was, how do we, as a board, want to conceive of the policy process? There are, you know, the, I think the NY, two S's, NYSSBA, has, is basically going through and, it has a book of recommended policies, I think, as I understand it, and it's going through and seeing where we don't have those policies, and giving us drafts of policies to insert in our policy book, and it's also going through our existing policies, and suggesting where the language should change because either a perceived gap, or because there's a legal or regulatory issue of some sort.
Can I just interrupt you for one second? NISBA is only recommending new policies where their regulations exist, that we should have a policy.
Yeah, that's, that's.
They're not, they're not recommending policies just for the sake of a policy, there's, there's a rationale behind it.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's right, but I think the, it's been, as part of this process, it's been a fair amount of work, at least for me, to figure out what that rationale really is. You know, I mean, they may say, oh, it's required, but I want to know kind of why, rather than just hear the word required and say, okay, it's required. So, but, but I think that's, but that, but that's a different issue, right? You know, we can, if something is required, we can take some time and figure out why, and then make a decision of whether it's required or not, and go there, that's, it's a different, you know, I, do we, do we conceive of the policy process as something where the board is attempting to decide to use the policy process as a way to imprint its values and the community's values on the district, you know, and the education of the district, and really being a district-specific thing, and where we really use the policy process as a way for the board to, the board to really have, you know, an influence on, and, and help set the goals and direction for the district through that process? Or are we really, do we think of it as more of a legal process, where we're just kind of, it's up to us just to figure out what's legally required? Where we're just kind of, it's up to us just to figure out what's legally required and put those policies in?
Does it have to be an either-or?
No, it doesn't, although I think there's, there's a separate question of whether, there, there are some policies that we've seen, and I don't think they've really gotten to the board yet, with one exception tonight, I think, where there is also a question of whether, if there's existing regulations or laws that the, that the district needs to follow, of whether those should generally be codified in policy? Or whether it's just enough that there are laws and regulations that the district follows, and the district can go ahead and follow them without the board having to have any policy about it?
Should we address that point first?
I think that's a, that's a fairly distinct, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to stop you from being a little rambling, but this is not something I was.
And can I just add to what you're saying?
Yeah.
And this is my personal feelings, as I've been a member of the Policy Committee for two years, and I wasn't, now I am. I look at the policy manual as a kind of a reference book. I mean, it seems like there's educational laws that could probably fill 20 volumes of notebooks, you know, binders. Our policy manual is something that administrators, teachers, parents can go to to know what's what, what's, what are the rules? Kind of, I look at it as a dumbed-down version of these long, very legal, legal regulations. So that's how I look at it, as I approach reading these, these policies. So when there's very specific language, like, I know what you're referring to, I think it should be included in the, in the policy, because I don't think someone's going to go looking up the actual law and try to figure it out. You know, I kind of look at it as an abbreviated version, when we're talking about policies that have a regulation behind it.
Seems that there's an added benefit, which is that our, our policies are, are a public document to our community, because we link to our policy documents from our website, from, and from.
Headlines.
Board docs, yeah. And that the law, you know, to go and look up the state regs, it is a little bit difficult. I have a big book in my office, and I look at it from time to time, but it's not easy to find stuff in there. So by adopting regulations that the state has, has made, and that NISBA is then recommending, we actually are making those policies transparent to our community. We're most likely having to follow them anyway, because they're state regulations. All we're doing is codifying them as part of our policy, and then making that transparent to the community. So that's why I see, I see that as a benefit and not necessarily a detriment, because we have to follow the laws anyway.
No, that's, that's fair. I mean, I mean, I think the, the counter on that is that, you know, a Board Governance 101 says, you know, the policy, policies are really how boards are supposed to govern.
Right.
Right? And if all we're doing is, you know, we don't want to only, I mean, whether, whether we do this codification or not.
Right, that shouldn't be our only responsibility.
And the detail to which we do it, I mean, obviously, we have to draw the line.
Right.
Can't codify every last bit of regulation. And there might be reasons we shouldn't do that, legal reasons we shouldn't do that. But we also, I think, want to be asking as, addressing as a board, are there areas where we think we should give, you know, have specific guidance? Like, we have talked still behind the scenes about, you know, what the rules should be about board members speaking to members of the district staff, and we may well want to have a policy on that. There is no law or regulation that governs that one way or another. There are, you know, some legal concerns that we might have, but they're not, you know, they're not very restrictive on that. Or, you know, we had the issue last, the beginning of last year about.
Free speech.
Yeah, which wasn't obviously required by law, but it was something that, I'm not really sure what the genesis of that was, but it was obviously discretionary. But I think there are more, more productive ways for us to think about what we as the board want, and to shape this district through policymaking that we're probably not, we might, we might be able to take more advantage of than we are.
I agree with you, but I thought the charge and what we had discussed last year, that we put money into the budget for to start for this year, was we wanted to review our policy manual. That was kind of the reason behind this review.
Yeah.
So I agree with you that we, you know, the board does set a vision, and we do have policies that have nothing to do with regulations. It's what we, as the School Board of Irvington, want for our district. But that's not, I don't think, what we've been charged with now, that we are trying to accomplish. We're trying to update and clean our current policy manual to, you know, and comply with the regulations. We're not looking right now to add any new policies.
Well, we might, we can if we want.
We can if we want, but right now, I thought our charge was, we're committing, we discuss it as a board. We said we wanted to do this, so the Policy Committee has been charged with, take 18 months updating this policy manual.
Right.
Now, could there be something that might pop up that, you know, Phil might say in a future board meeting, "I really would like the Policy Committee, you know, the board to consider a new policy on this"? Yes, we could have those conversations. But I thought, right now, what we're trying to do is update our policy manual.
And that's, that's correct. I mean, the, the issue, I think, is the degree to which, is, is the, is the.
What language to include?
Well, what, yeah, what, the extent to which law and regulation need to be put into policy. And also trying to wring out of what information we have, exactly what is actually literally required policy, which is, I think, still not always easy to do.
So do we see that as two separate processes then? And the effort that's before us, and understand that Elaine and I got that email we've been waiting for with all the volumes of materials that we're going to have to start reviewing. And I felt that it was pertinent to have this conversation before we start trying to figure out that process, that as we see that, and as school boards explained it when Linda met with us, was that they went through our policy manual, and they're going through and looking for what they see as the required omissions, so legal omissions. So where they're highlighting things, they're telling, recommending where we need to insert certain language into existing policies based upon law. And then give us, in cases where we may be missing a policy, giving us a model policy. Where they are looking at our existing policies, there may be some that we have in place that are out of line, that they're going to tell us we need to reinvent. So we need to keep a focus on that compliance. But along that journey, there's that opportunity to say, "Hey, you know what? We're dog-eering this one, and we're coming back to this, because maybe we want to do something with it." Or, you know what, this introduced an idea that, you know, if we want to talk about board governance, and we want to talk about us being policy leaders in the district, we need a policy on this subject. Bev and I had a conversation today about wanting, maybe somewhere, putting in a policy specific that we want to have kids wear seatbelts on school buses. Because it's a verbal protocol, but we don't have it embedded in policy, which would be helpful. Those are the types of things that we can do along the way. So we, we do have a massive hurdle in front of us. And I, I think there needs to be a commitment to doing that work, and what that's going to look like. Because the policies that we see before us today, I think all of us could acknowledge, it was an arduous, arduous process to get these here. It's taken us months, going back to the fall for some, and there's still two that aren't here.
I think because the NYSSB did not give us very good information about the reasons behind what they were giving us.
But in most cases, but in most cases, I think we have to say that the conversation that we've had has been working from, there's only been a few policies that have been school board's model. The majority of the policies here are Irvington policies. We've inserted legal.
Right.
Language, and when the questions have come up, school boards has come directly back to us, or attorneys have, with the citations as to why those requirements are there. So I think there's a piece to it, maybe that, and maybe it's not at your comfort level yet.
Right, it's also, I think, I think it's required, well, I, I think it needs to be more than trust. It needs to be a clear explanation, honestly, I think.
What do you mean by clear explanation?
And if, if a policy is required, I want to know why. I want to know what regulation, what, what, what it is that compels the district to do X, Y, or Z. I don't think we should just take these things as, without an explanation.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm, I guess I'm confused about is I feel like, when we've gone back and forth with these emails, that the regulations were cited. I mean, we were given the actual.
Did you look at the site and try to understand what, what the reason behind the site was?
What, you mean the actual regulation? I actually did for one of them. I actually looked at the regulation.
Because I did a lot, and in general, it was often not very clear.
What the regulation was saying?
Yeah, what, how that linked to policies being required or not.
But that's a, I think that's a different conversation, John, and I think.
And I think if that were just, yeah, it's a different, it's a different kind. That, this, this is a conversation for the Policy Committee to have on itself, I think, because that's just a question of how we do our work effectively. Let me just raise one other board-level thing, I think. Which is, the extent to which, when we have a policy, we're going to consider some policies tonight. For example, homebound instruction, I think, is one of our policies tonight. Do we want to, as a matter of course, make it as part of our consideration of policy? An understanding of just, in, in some cases, it's just mood, it doesn't really matter. But in some others, it might be helpful for us to know a little bit about what the current state of district practices on the topic, like homebound instruction. What are we doing on homebound instruction? Are we, as a board, satisfied with what's being done in that? Because we're essentially rewriting that policy, and that may be the appropriate time to tackle these sorts of issues.
I mean, my comment about that is, it would solve a problem where I believe, I don't know if this is still true, but there definitely in the past have been policies that in practice was not how things worked. And then I think that becomes very problematic when you have.
Can I, can you give me an example? What do you mean?
Code of conduct. There was a certain code of conduct laid out, but in practice, it was not, it was never followed. I mean, I think we addressed this years ago, but I'm saying, it has been, it has come up a couple of times where certain things are listed in the policy, but really not in practice. So how do we, how do we marry that? So your suggestion would essentially confirm that if we're going to renew a policy, we also kind of renew that it, it works. Like, what's in there is actually what we're doing. Because I think it's bad when, when someone comes up and says, "Hey, this is what's going on." And you're like, "Wow, that's not even close to what's in the policy." And it, it seems like, as a matter of checking it as we go forward, would make a lot more sense than, you know, where you started, otherwise.
But I don't think that's what he's saying.
Well, it is in a way, I mean, the question, are we, are we, yeah, I mean, it, it's, you know, I think that the devil is in the details, and it really varies policy to policy. But, you know, it, it seems to me in a lot of them, it's helpful for us, if we have a policy on homebound instruction, to know what we're doing on homebound instruction.
But we had that conversation in the Policy Committee, when we met.
No, I know we did, in that one, but the question is, does it make sense to do it generally? And to bring it, in some cases.
But you're always, but you're always welcome, you know, as a board member, to propose a topic that we then follow up with.
No, I know, but if we're going to go through these policies, it may well make sense to take them. You know, my, my template, I think, on these policies is, understand what our current policy is. Understand what the current state or district practices on a particular topic, and any issues that might, we might want to be aware of. And then what changes to the current policy are either, are required, and why? And what changes might be desirable from the standpoint of district practice or policy? It's probably a four-part process, I think.
But that's not viable within the context of the work that we're doing now. It almost seems like every step of the way, we'd be doing like a, a mini-assessment of each of those areas. And I would say, if there's, through the process of this, throughout the year, then there's certain things that become of interest from the Policy Committee. It's the opportunity, when you have your committee reports, to point out, "This is an interesting thing we should look at." And that can inform goals for future work. Because frankly, what it's turned into is like little mini-research projects on many different aspects of things. And I completely appreciate the desire for knowledge here. But we're not going to be able to complete the task that's before us at the rate that we're going, so we need to clarify objectives.
Well, can I just, but I, one thing that strikes me is that it's not an all-or-nothing proposition that if you have a, if you discover a policy that you think requires additional discussion with the entire board, that doesn't necessarily keep us, that doesn't necessarily prevent you from, on the Policy Committee, from going ahead and finishing your work on that policy and getting it adopted, because we can go back and we can modify it, if there are things that we've.
Yeah. Of course.
Because.
So, so the question is.
The whole thing has to be done in, in the context of the bigger project, right?
Well, do, so we're really, I think, both of you are envisioning this as really taking instructions on what the legal requirements are, and passing them through to our policy book.
Well, and I think maybe also, but tweaking them to make them, if, if it's appropriate, tweaking them to make it appropriate to us.
And what is, how do you do that?
I, I think, again, it's, it depends.
It's a policy-by-policy basis.
Yeah, it's a policy, like, I'll take purchasing, for example. That, to me, was a very simple one, because the, the ad there was the whole piggybacking. Like, some of them are going to be more complicated, like, the one I see more complicated, making more Irvington, was the wellness one.
Yeah, which we're still not done with.
So what I'm saying is, is I think some of them are more simple, and others are not going to be as simple. And I think we're not going to get a cookie-cutter answer, like, "This is how you have to handle them," because I think it's in the nature of what we're reviewing. You know, I agree with you, the homebound instruction, you know, when we meet, I don't, I think it, it's helpful to meet as a group, and having the parties who are invested, like, asking those questions to Scott Palermo and.
And it's not, it's not that that was, there wasn't a lot of issues with that. It was just kind of, hey, how many, how many homebound students do we have? Well, we're on the topic.
No, but I think it was a little bit more than that, exactly how does this process work? I mean, I think, you know, there were some questions we had to ask before we could, you know, make recommendations.
That's, I mean, I don't have anything more to say on topic, so.
I mean, it seems to me it's about picking and choosing our battles, that, I mean, I do appreciate the thoroughness, the way you just described that four-step process.
Yeah.
And it seems like in a perfect world, that would be the appropriate thing to do. But maybe there's a way to focus that, that process on the, on the policies that are relevant to us as a community, and then trying to be, maybe not having quite the due diligence across all the policies.
I hope that all of our policies are relevant to us as a community. I'm not really sure that why they're in our policy block.
Because there are regulations that we have to, laws that we have to follow.
I don't think they have to be in our, generally, they don't have to be in our policies unless they're, we choose to have. I don't think generally, there may be exceptions. There are some exceptions.
No, that's not true, because in some of these regulations, it says, "You must have a policy on."
Not very many that I've seen so far.
But there are.
More than we've been told.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so this obviously doesn't have to have a conclusion, I think.
It's just helpful to see where people, obviously, were at somewhat different.
And then sometimes there are going to be circumstances that you and I are not going to agree on the changes. And we, and there's one tonight, we'll discuss it, and then the majority will rule on how that policy will read. That's helpful.
Right, right, that's right, that's right, and that's, and that's fine.
Yeah.
And that's, and if we all, you know, there's no point in having both of us on the committee if we're going to be all.
There you go.
All right, so we can actually get to these policies and start having.
Maybe we should adjourn for the night and do.
No.
Not do the policies again.
I saw that. I was just kidding.
Okay. So.
John's just messing with you. So we are moving on to policies, which is our.
First read.
Our first read. And our first policy is, and again, there's nothing to adopt here, this is a first read. So there's no motions, or anything, so this is our purchasing policy, 6.1.
Right. Can I just kind of take the lead on that, please?
Please, yeah.
Okay, so 6.1 was purchasing. John and I both signed, you know, we kind of agreed to the changes on that one. Bob, and you had no questions, and Robin, you had, according to my notes, no questions on purchasing. Okay, we're moving on. 6.2, homebound instruction. Robin, you had a question more about the referral process?
Yeah, it just, it just, it seemed like there used to be a.
You were questioning why the doctor was.
Well, the doctor used to be part of it. I mean, the school physician needed to refer, like, if someone's out because they break a hip, I'm, I'm just questioning why that's a Scott Palermo, or, you know, PPS versus physician.
Well, just so you understand, everything goes through PPS. So even if there is someone who is out of school due to disciplinary issues, and there's a superintendent's hearing, or, you know, ultimately, it still goes, everything is.
Any homebound instruction.
Any homebound instruction goes through PPS, exactly. So that's why that was.
So they coordinate where it's coming from and they sign off.
Exactly, because there's different parties.
So you're just saying, take out layer two.
Correct, Chris?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and this was an area with a diligence, I think. You know, we. You know, we realized through some of the questions that we didn't have a good tracking system. So, and going through and collecting the data that the policy committee had requested, it resulted in Gail and myself having a couple meetings, and she constructed a system that where we're tracking this going forward, and it's being introduced to administrators next week, so.
Okay. So that was your only question about homebound?
For me, yeah.
No, I have nothing to say, no more to say. It was interesting, we did get some statistics on the number of homebound. I don't have them, I can find the email.
I mean, it obviously fluctuates based during the year, but is there a rough average that we have?
No, there were no-
Yeah, no.
Well, we didn't have any records to rely upon beyond three years ago, I think it was. And then we had a big spike last year, and this year's is way down.
And it was, was that the one, was that the, was this a situation where we had one particular grade that seemed to be having more of it? I think it was this one.
But when you say grade, it's not, it was a four kids versus one kid in a grade.
Yeah, well, that's the number we're talking, the numbers we're talking about. And there's a mix of disciplinary and health-related reasons.
John can forward you that email when he finds it. Put that on your checklist. Okay, moving on. Six point three is security breach. In the, oh, I had this open, hold on.
Information.
In the last paragraph, no, you said in the last paragraph-
I did, but I'm trying to remember.
I don't have your comments in front of your-
I have.
I have it. She said in the last paragraph, you wanted to remove, so it reads, "Any breach of the district's information, storage, or computer," that's the language you want removed, right?
Well, I just thought you could take out information, storage, or computerized data, and say just any breach of the district's-
Information?
Any, any breach of the district which compromise security. It didn't seem like you need to limit it to those two.
But that's the per, focus of the policy. We're required by law to have policies on information, so it's about identity theft? So, so you think breach, someone could be breaking into a building, right? This is specific to accessing information?
That's fine.
And this was a policy, I think, that we've already done once since I've been on board. And then there's since been updates that have specific requirements to use of computer data.
That's fine, I was just reading from the perspective of what makes the most sense.
Yeah, and this is just a huge, hugely hot area.
So that's fine, I'm fine with that.
Okay, six point four, smoking?
Okay. This is the policy that John and I differ on, the smoking policy.
I mean, we're both not in favor of smoking.
Right. Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're-
You don't have to put a smoking label on it.
Okay, why can't I go that close?
Well, can I, Maria, may I? Okay, so the issue, the issue that Maria and I-
Differ on?
Differ on, in terms of our, it's really a question of, you know, preference. It's not a question of, is the, is the sentence, it's the second sentence in the policy, "Also in accordance with New York State law, smoking or tobacco use is also prohibited within 100 feet of all school entrances, exits, and outdoor areas, except where that is a residence or residential property." So this is a place where we're putting into policy a statement about something that happens basically outside of the school jurisdiction, outside of school grounds. For example, on the sidewalk on Main Street, on Main Street or on Ferris, on the side of Main Street School. So it's probably mostly Main Street School. It may conceivably apply to certain areas and field-
No, because it has exclusion of residential property.
But it's all, well, okay, but it's everything-
So specifically, the example was, that we used in the policy committee was Main Street, the sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Theoretically, according to this law, and in the law, it says 100 feet.
Right.
John thinks we should, feels we should omit the language of 100 feet. I feel very strongly that it should be there, because that's exactly what the law is. Now, is Chris Harrison going to stop, some parents stop smoking on the sidewalk?
He doesn't have the authority to do that.
Correct, he doesn't. But he could call the police and tell them that you are in breach of-
They don't have the authority to do it either. They have, the law, which I read on this, says that they have to, it takes some work to actually find out what the rules are with this policy stuff. They would have, the village would have to put up no smoking signs in the relevant areas. And this would mean that people walking down the sidewalk on Main Street would have a place where they, stretch where they wouldn't have to smoke. And then the village could enforce that, and I think there's fines, not a very severe enforcement.
Right.
But this, to me, is a village issue, it's not a school issue. That's, it's not our jurisdiction to say what happens outside of the school grounds. And that's why I don't think, that's why I prefer not to put it in. It's a question of preference.
Right.
You know, it's, it's neither here nor there, because putting this in the policy has no influence on what actually happens.
It's got no teeth, right.
But, and which is one reason I prefer to keep it out, because it just doesn't do anything. And it kind of, to me, I'd rather have a leaner policy than a kind of-
Well, also-
A lot of, I don't know, for me, it's more cluttered, it's got superfluous things that don't really refer to our directing the administration to do something, because they can't do this.
I mean, just very quickly, I felt very strongly, actually, the opposite, that it should be in there. I found, I agree with John, that it has no teeth, but the law actually, it's not, if they didn't mean 100 feet, they wouldn't have put it in there. I don't agree with why they did this, whatever, it's their rationale. But I feel very strongly, if it's in there, and that's specific, I think it should be in our policy.
I mean, isn't the intent of this statement to give us some appearance of teeth to prevent someone from smoking within 100 feet of our-
We have no right to do that, as far as I know. The law doesn't confer on schools the right to enforce smoking outside of school grounds. It's municipal authorities who have to deal with that, not school authorities. We don't have jurisdiction outside of school grounds, as far as I know. The law, there's a law about this, but it has to do with outdoor smoking. New York State rules generally on outdoor smoking. It's not specifically within New York State school law.
So it's just a personal preference thing?
Yeah, it's a personal preference, we could put it in there, and it's not gonna affect-
Majority rules, you know, this is one of these, yeah.
Well, here's three or four, we're, well, we're not, this is only a first read.
Right.
You know, it could be, it'd be helpful to have Phil's and Robin's view on this. And then that might inform whether we put this in the second read or not. I mean, it's, I think we've just both expressed our taste on the matter, and, you know, there it is.
I see your point. If it's not enforceable, then what's the point of having it?
Okay. I guess that's a statement of your taste on the matter.
Right, if it's not enforceable, then what's the point? Robin?
I mean, I could go either way, but my general rule on policies is what I said before, which is, if we can't enforce it, and we need to practice, then it just looks a little as a policy.
So you wanna do it with the whole sentence?
No, no, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I can go back to one of the other iterations, because we took it out and put it back.
Yeah, I think the whole sentence goes.
So it's out, no, I don't-
Yeah, that's fine. And frankly, I think this is a good way to tackle these things, where if Maria and I have different views, we'll come and we'll talk about it, you know? And then it's convenient here that it was actually three. Because if it was two, then we wouldn't know how Bob came out, and we'd still be stuck, but.
And then Robin had a suggestion on that policy as well.
On the smoking?
Would you like to add "and" school grounds to the last?
Right, to the last.
In addition to prohibitions?
Where's this, can you just-
It was-
The last sentence of the first paragraph.
Right, it says, "The district prohibits the use of electronic cigarettes in all school buildings and school grounds and grounds."
Right, it was just being consistent with how I mentioned the sentence or two about-
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was something that may have been there, because we moved that sentence around a couple times.
Yeah, I'm actually surprised, I kinda thought we'd meant to do that.
Yeah, we probably had it there, and we relocated it, and that better got lost.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I believe then we also, because we also talked about the use in vehicles, the transport person, yeah, we did.
It says it, it says "and in any vehicle."
Right, for smoking up above, but in terms of the district with the electronic cigarettes.
Well, the thing is, yeah, yeah. The problem is, I guess, that this is, we can do it. I mean, I have no problem banning electronics. It's mostly, we're talking primarily school buses, I suppose we're talking-
Well, it says that used to transport children or personnel.
So can we just import the same language?
Right, that's exactly right.
All school, on school grounds and in any vehicle used to-
Yeah, there may be some as well.
Because Robin's other pickup was what I had sent in one of my emails, in the-
Let's, let's be fair, it's been difficult to manage thirty different versions of these.
Move on.
Hey, can we vote on the shush?
Evaluation.
I'm sure I would be outvoted.
No, I'm all for free speech.
All right, Maria, evaluation?
You know, actually, the edits, the last edits I have have that language in there, so.
Wait, 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 in homebound instruction?
And that's on, can you just email it to me then? Oh, maybe.
I'm sorry, but in homebound instruction, I just thought that was a typo. I think there were words missing at the end, was the second part of what I said. I forgot, I misread that that was part of homebound instruction. It says is, and then it goes to and. Is and, it looks like there's a word missing in the last paragraph.
Was that in homebound?
The administration will periodically evaluate whether homebound instruction is, and if not, is what? Seems like some word just got dropped.
Remember, this was what I, I had wrote this in my email.
Sorry.
No, it was fixed, and this is just an old version.
Yes.
Looks like we're missing something.
Where, where are we? Where are we?
Back on homebound instruction.
So we just have to do it, we have to make an edit there.
Homebound instruction, I'm sorry, we-
The last sentence.
I was still on smoking, sorry.
The last sentence, you're right, I put that onto the other one, that's why I didn't have that.
The administration will periodically evaluate where the homebound instruction is, is what?
And then, and if not, take steps, like, there was missed, remember?
Right, you missed something.
Well, you know what, this is my fault here, because we were trying to figure out which of the most recent versions were, because we lost track of a couple.
Right.
So just put something in there.
There was an edit there.
Yep.
Yeah, we had, an earlier version had said whether homebound instruction is effective in keeping students on track to graduate. But we took that out, but I think we didn't put, I forgot why we took it out, but then we didn't put something else in.
Because you didn't want it limited to just saying graduate. You wanted, you talked about kids being on their own path and achieving it, their capability.
I did, I don't remember, but anyway.
We'll find the version.
Yeah, so we have a little bit of version.
Yeah, there's another version.
That's what I figured.
Confusion here.
And then student health services and student evaluation, you had no comments on those.
I had, there's another typo, I think.
Oh, the typo, degree.
The word degree was crossed off, but nothing else was added in its place, so there's missing words.
Wait, can you, can you just slow down? Where, what policy are you on now?
Under the student evaluation.
Oh, okay.
Under the testing section.
Why is this not coming for me now?
And my thing, they were, someone had physically crossed off the word degree on the copy that was attached in board docs.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll figure that out.
But nothing else, yeah, you know what I mean, crossed off, but it's just more of a typo thing.
Okay. We move on to six point six, student evaluation.
What were we just talking about?
That's what we just did.
Yeah, health services is the one that there were no comments on. That was the last one.
Sorry.
Yep.
And no comments, unless Phil has comments.
Yep.
We did some close editing of this one, you know, exactly how you define, how you talk about inhalers and all that. Because it just was kind of, just needed some, you know, just kind of words missing, to make it read better.
We appreciate your work.
Okay.
All right, so we have moved on to our consent agenda. And for, in the interest of time, since it is late and no one's here, does anybody have any comments or concerns about the consent agenda? Otherwise, we'll just approve it. All right, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, which is items in eight, point one, eight point two, and nine point one, nine point two?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That completes our consent agenda. We have no community left for questions?
We gave them a chance earlier.
We were very generous tonight, partly because Robin pointed out, you should try and get the community to, you know, have questions earlier, we're gonna have a long discussion.
I think it's, I think it's just generally a good thing, that people, you know, I would even like to see it, as I said before, I'd like to see it earlier, just, yeah, people don't have to sort of sit-
They don't wanna listen to us speak?
They might, but give them, let them do that voluntarily.
Clearly not a ten twenty-five at night, they don't.
So we're on to our last item, which is the Board of Education discussion. Any items anybody would like to bring up for a future meeting? No? Our next meeting, then, is Tuesday, April 14. Next Tuesday, at night before Tax Day, at seven thirty. And we will have an executive session-
Yes.
We will continue our personnel die from today.
At six thirty. So can I have a motion to adjourn our public meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay.
We're done.
What?